New Councilmember Garth Nysen. Give him a shout out and hello, Garth.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to have you here. I'd like to offer the invocation and I would ask Councilman Truman, would you lead us in the place of the lead?
Our Father in heaven, we come before thee this evening. We are grateful for the beautiful land that we have to live in, this country. Grateful for this city of Washington, for great residents that live here. Grateful for them and asking to bless them, their lives, each and every one of them, things that may stand in need. Grateful to be able to represent them here and ask for thy Spirit to bless you to be with us if we make those decisions that impact the city and the lives of those people. Again, we're grateful for all that we have and we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Truman. I want to excuse Councilman Staley, he's going to be a few minutes late. Before we move to approve the agenda, there's been a request. We always try and accommodate those that have time constraints. Items GH and J on the public hearing, the related notices, if we could move those up in the front and the top of that category, if that's okay with the city council.
Move them in front of A to A then.
Move them in front of A to A. Other than that, there's no other amendments to the agenda that I can see.
Okay, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda with the order changes you suggest.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second?
Turek, aye.
Sig Miller, aye.
Truman, aye.
Nysen, aye.
Thank you. Item two, announcements. The announcements to present, we do have outgoing Councilman Hudson. We'd like to give him a little tribute, but he's not here yet. He's busy and he's going to show up sometime. So when he shows up, we're going to stop and we'll honor Bill when he gets here. Item three, declaration of abstentions and conflicts, ain't you declare? Okay, item four, consent agenda, to approve the minutes of the city council meetings in 12, 19, 13, and to approve the board audit report.
You also want to do those alcohol licenses.
Oh, excuse me, and renewal of the alcohol licenses, off-premise license for a service station, Albertson's Hearts Gas and Food, Maverick Coral Canyon Golf Course. Consideration to approve the following on-premise license for Don Pedro's family Mexican restaurant, Coral Canyon Grill.
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I would move that we approve the consent agenda. It's been read.
I'll second the motion.
Second, there's a motion and a second? Nysen, aye.
Truman, aye.
Sig Miller, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Annual audit report, presentation of our 2012-2013 fiscal year audit report, Hinton-Burnett-Hall and Spilker. I believe it's David Whitworth that would be presenting that to us, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, David.
All right. Jump in here. I'm Dave Whitworth, Audit Manager with Hinton-Burnett CPAs and Advisors, here to report on the fiscal year 2013 audit. It looks like we've got a good crowd here who are excited to pour over the financial statements. I believe you've all got copies of the financial statements that we'll touch on in just a moment. You've also should have received a letter that has our standard required communications. In that letter, there's no issues, no significant issues to point out. So let's go ahead and, first of all, I want to thank the city for the opportunity to provide audit services. We appreciate it and we certainly appreciate the staff and management, Roger, Kimberly, Brian, we appreciate all their efforts in helping us complete the audit. So if you have your, the bound financial statements here, let's quickly go over the reports. Page one is our audit report. And we've issued a unmodified or a clean opinion, so no issues there. And then if we kind of flip towards the back, page 71 is our report on internal control and compliance. There are two deficiencies there that we'll touch on in our findings letter in just a moment. Then page 73 is our report on state legal compliance. And again, there we've issued a unmodified or a clean opinion. So if we jump over to page 77 is our findings and recommendations. This year, there are two significant deficiencies that we'd like to touch on. The first one there is you see 13-01, misstatements. That in the prior year was a material weakness, so this year there's been an improvement. It's been downgraded from a material weakness to a significant deficiency, so that's moving the right direction there. And the main issue with this finding is as we conduct our audit, there were several adjustments that we identified that were needed to make the books accurate. And the reason it decreased from a material weakness to a significant deficiency is because we noted fewer adjustments that were needed this year and the magnitude of those adjustments was less, so that's a positive there. The main areas that we had misstatements in, and these primarily relate to misstatements of financial reporting. So accounts payable, accounts receivable, capital assets, and various misclassified items. So those are the main areas involving the misstatements. Turning over to page 78 is the other significant deficiency, bank reconciliations. Since the, and this one's reissued from the prior year, since the conversion to the new accounting software several years back, it's taken some time to learn the new system and finding effective ways to reconcile the monthly bank reconciliations. Again, we've noted some improvement and we expect continued improvement there.
Is there a way to quantify what the deficiency is as far as dollar wise on the bank reconciliations?
I believe, Kimberly, was it about 13,000 at the end of the year, which considering the total, you know, assets of the city is relatively small, but you know, where it's cash, you know, that's obviously an area of concern and that's why we've got the significant deficiency there. Yeah, and it is, that reconciliation is taking place every month with the bank statements, just the reconciliation with the general ledger where that, those monthly transactions come in.
Matter of matching, we still haven't matched up.
Yes. Anytime, and that's, anytime there's a change in accounting software, there's going to be some issues to work through and straightening that out.
Yeah, you know, obviously I don't suspect any improprieties, but anytime you change that, it also opens the door to allow something to happen, so.
Right.
Your statement there, the main operating, and I'm reading on page 78, the main operating bank account has never been completely reconciled in the city's new accounting system. Why didn't the audit last year identify that as an issue?
It did, that's, yeah, that finding, you notice that finding is referenced 11-01, that means it was originated in fiscal year 11. So it's been there since fiscal year 11 when the new system was first implemented, so good question. All right. And like I say, we have seen improvements over those three years. It's getting closer and we expect that to continue to get closer and be able to reconcile that completely, so. All right. And then the next four findings are under the compliance section. The state actually put out a new audit compliance guide for us to follow this past year and resulted in these, a couple of new procedures, areas that we have to look at. And these first two items are a result of those new procedures that we look at. That first one, 13-02, is governing bodies review of financial reports. The state requires that financial reports detailing receipts and dispersments for all funds be reviewed quarter, at least quarterly by the council. And then, and then I believe it's the city's policies to also review a budget status report. And so it's important to make sure those quarterly reports are being reviewed in a council meeting.
That has been done this last court, we actually did review that.
Yeah. All right. And then that 13-03, inter-fund allocations of cost, the city, there's several utility funds that make transfers to the general fund for certain administrative costs and overhead costs. And the state simply requires that there be a formal study that's updated at least every five years to make sure that allocation amount is up to date. And so we just need to make sure that that study's done and updated at least every five years, so.
Some of that this last year, or this year, started off.
Yeah. And that's kind of been a new area of focus for the state. And then the next two are items that have been reissued from previous years. That 11-02, general fund maximum fund balance. The state has requirements on how much you can have in unrestricted funds in the general fund and the city's balance exceeds the maximum. So just something to keep in mind there. Better than being below the minimum.
Looks like we've got some road money there, maybe.
Yeah, we actually see quite a few cities that have that problem. It's, it makes it difficult to budget if you only have a certain amount to work with, but.
Just to reflect, what was the amount that we were over, the 25% limit?
I don't.
Was it 28%? Yeah, 28%.
I don't know if I can answer that because we usually have to wait until the audit comes up to know because it's kind of those moving figures from this year's budget than the previous year and those type of things.
I don't recall the exact number, but I think it was around several hundred thousand.
And if you remember, in a discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the fact that it would be exceeding that amount, the money the council could allocate.
Several hundred thousand wouldn't even be 1%, but if the ceiling is 25%, that would maybe fit us at 26.
Yeah, but it's not 25% of the total budget, that's why the formula we always have to know, weight, it's a little funky.
Yeah, the state has a, it's 25% of the estimated revenue of the general fund and then the state further breaks down what estimated revenue is. You know, it excludes other financing sources such as inter-fund transfers and debt, so it's, but yeah, I can get that exact number. We do a calculation on it as we look at the audit.
I actually think it's in the audit book, maybe on page, I think it's somewhere in there.
Should be in there somewhere.
David? Can we take a slight break?
Sure.
Bill, would you come on up? Those of you that mentioned, know Bill Hudson. Bill Hudson served as a city councilman for the last four years. We truly appreciated working with him and wanted to give him some appreciation. Thank you, David.
Yep, no problem. All right, and then on page 80 is the last one there, the budgetary compliance. There were just, there were several funds that were over budget, so we just need to monitor that.
Do you know which ones, which ones those are?
I don't have that with me, but I definitely have, I can get that. All right. Any questions on any of the findings, any other questions? Let's go ahead and quickly, before we jump into the.
I'm sorry, I did have one question on the finding 13-03 under compliance and other matters about the transfers between enterprise funds and general funds. I know that we do always have impact fee type studies. Is that the type of study you're recommending that we adopt, or is there supposed to be a study that also governs how they transfer between the funds?
Yeah, this is a separate study that would, because essentially you're saying the general fund is, has these costs, overhead costs, that really should be applied to utility funds, and so the utility funds are reimbursing the general fund for those overhead costs.
So we need to hire a study that'll determine how much of the utility fund, for example, is benefiting from the general fund?
Right, yeah, some of those administrative.
Because I know staff has just kind of tried to estimate those as possible.
Let me just weigh in real quickly. As far as hiring someone, really what you have to have is a defensible rationale for the allocations. And so to me, what's most important is that we look at, and each of the funds might be different, for instance, we could base the, an allocation to the general fund on HR based upon number of personnel, but we need to have that very clear, how that's done and that matches up with what transfers occur. Hard costs such as auditor's costs, we know that those are hard costs, those ought to be spread over on some formulary and ought to be spread over the proprietary funds as well. We just need to be in a position that we can identify how that formulary is put in place and then confident that it makes sense and it's understandable and then legislate. So I don't think, and David may correct me here, but I don't think, you know, we need to hire this firm.
Yeah, no.
To come in and do this whole blown study, which is very different than an impact.
We just need to have something formal determined about that.
And we always have had some, really the non-compliance, we've always had some, we've always had some formulary for what we've done, but we've really not updated it in the last five years. And we've known that and have been talking about that and thinking about that, even saw some of that this year, we started to reevaluate that. That's the issue, we need to just sit down and kind of recalculate that. Could mean more inter-fund transfer changes, I don't know. Is that something that needs to be written, policy written type thing, or is it? Well, I think what we would do, and I think that what, yes, we would want to be able, if someone was to say, well, how come the transfer from this proprietary fund went to general fund? We would need to be in a position, the legislative body would need to be in a position, staff would need to be in a position to say, this is the methodology by which we use to do those transfers. So yes, at some level, it would want to be spelled out what the formulary is.
And I'd like that. I don't suspect impropriety, but I do know that over the years of budgets that have stacked on, that's, that often seems to be something that kind of ebbs and flows back and forth, these transfers and what comes and goes, and it'd be nice to understand the methodology behind that.
And actually, the allocations are really the ones that have ebbed and flowed. Transfers from the other fund have remained very flat. Matter of fact, we've never changed, the exception of not too many years ago, the electric fund actually stopped doing a transfer when the municipal energy sales tax came in place. And so, but as far as the water sewer and other funds, they've been very, they've been flat in fund transfers each year. But sometimes we have done some allocation changes.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe all those transfers have remained the same for quite some time, so. Okay, let's quickly jump to page 48 of the financial statements. Just wanted to point out, the city did two bond refundings, which are essentially refinance to recognize some savings there, so that's a very positive thing for the city. You'll notice on page 48 there on note 16, the Coral Canyon Special Service District bonds, refunding there resulted in an economic gain of about 833,000 and a reduction of future debt service payments of about 888,000. And then in that second paragraph in note 16 is the electric revenue bonds were also refinanced and essentially savings there of about 400, economic gain of about 457,000 and 528,000 in future debt service payment reduction there, so that's great. There was one refunding in fiscal year 12 as well, so it's great to take advantage of those opportunities to save there. All right, let's go ahead and jump to the, some of the graphs, we'll take a look at some of the financial trends and highlights. Well, if you up there have copies of those and some of it, this will be a little bit hard to see, but. First of all, we'll take a look at the general fund and the general fund balance sheet trend. You've got the top line there of assets, that middle line is equity and then the bottom line is liabilities. You can see the big jump there in both assets and liabilities. And a portion of that is from an implementation of a new standard, GASB 65, in connection with GASB 33, that essentially put about a $2 million receivable on the city's books for the subsequent year's property tax. And that's because the lien date was before June 30, so there's a legal claim to those property taxes. But there's also a corresponding revenue because those revenues relate to the next fiscal year, so it's essentially a wash, just a accounting issue there, so. But as you see there, equity, that middle line increased some and increased about 786,000 for fiscal year 13. Let's go ahead and jump to page two. So here's the cash trend. That, the top line is, well, let me start with the bottom. The bottom line is the cash of the general fund. And then I've also included, that middle line is, it's called a due from other funds, essentially loaned to other funds for funds that are short on cash. And so essentially adding those two equals that top line to kind of get a truer picture of what the general fund has there. Again, you can see the increase there in the cash trend. Staying with the general fund, here we've got on page three, there's the revenues and expenditures total for the general fund. And you can see revenues are up and expenditures are actually down some. So before transfers, there's about a $1.2 million increase and then after transfers, about $786,000 increase, so a positive trend there in the increase. In the revenues, the major increases were in sales tax, building permits, zoning subdivision fees, those were the main areas. And then the next page, we'll actually can look at some of the expenditures in more detail, on page four. So here, this gives you expenditures for fiscal year 13 compared to the prior year by program or function. You can see overall fairly consistent, the parks were, expenditures were down some and then also debt service was down, and that was mainly due to, in the prior year, there was a $300,000 UDOT loan payoff. So let's jump to five. If you have any questions on any of these, no. Kind of interesting to look at the trends in certain revenue sources, sales tax revenues. You can see the increase over the last three years in sales tax. Let's take a look at property tax. Getting there, you can see the increase for this year. And then this next slide will give you the percentages. This graph can be a little confusing, it's, that 6%, that top line is for sales tax, so it increased 6% over the prior year. And property tax is that bottom line, it increased 4%, 4.35%. So increases in both property and sales tax there.
How can it, how can it be a downward trend when it increased over the prior year?
That's, the prior year increased 9% from the previous year, so.
Okay, so this is just, we're graphing the increases.
Right, exactly. Yep. All right, any questions on the general fund before we move on? Leisure Services Special Revenue Fund, including the community center operations. You see that top line is the expenditures, the bottom line is revenues. Notice the expenditures continue to exceed the revenues. However, there was a decrease in expenditures mainly due to labor and payroll costs. There's, so there was about a $165,000 decrease in that shortage, so that's a positive trend. And if you look at graph nine, the next one, that kind of shows the trend on the deficiency there that is essentially transferred from the general fund to cover that. So moving on to graph 10, we'll move into some of the utility funds. The water fund, this graph's the revenue, operating revenues and expenditures. You can see there, the last three fiscal years, you've had pretty well revenues equal to expenditures, there have been slight net increases there. However, if you look at the next one, page 11, you'll notice the cash and investments trend continue to increase there, so the cash balance is up from the prior year.
What else contributes to that cash increase? On the prior chart, the difference between revenues and expenses was not as great as that increase.
Uh huh, exactly. That's a good question. This, this, these numbers reflect non-cash items such as depreciation on capital assets, so that's a big part of the expenses that are in these figures there. And so if you look at the cash flow statement and the financial statements, you'll see that cash flows are actually positive, greater than the, you know, if you take out the depreciation expenses from the.
Of your impact fees.
Capital. Yep, there's also other non-operating items like impact fees contribute to that. Moving to 12, we'll take a look at the sewer fund. So you see here, kind of similar revenues and expenditures, operating revenues and expenditures have remained fairly consistent over the last few years. Back, you can see the dip from fiscal year nine, that's because there was some activity that was moved out of the sewer fund to the general fund. But after that, it's been fairly consistent. And then page 13, look at the cash trend, again, there's an increase there. Part of this increase in cash is due to, the general fund has loaned cash to the, some of the other funds, but also the sewer fund has in the past. In fiscal year 13, there really isn't any loans, it was about 4,000 that was loaned to other funds, whereas in fiscal year 12 is about 510,000. So part of that cash increases from other funds paying that, inter-fund loan back.
Will you go to the prior graph again?
This one?
Yeah, so we've got cash on hand that's multiple times greater than our total year's operating revenues.
Remember, some of that will be projected capital expenditure items.
Remember, some of that will be projected capital expenditure items. That's why we do the five-year capital plans, one, seven, three.
Yeah. Because that's what's going to really eat into some of your cash balances is when you have to make those significant capital improvements to the system and so forth. All right, move to electric fund. Graph 14, again, here's operating revenues and expenses for the electric fund. You can see here, margins have improved the last couple of years. Revenues and expenses have increased by similar amounts. Looks good there. And then if we move to 15, see the cash trend there. You see, this one increased by about 3.5 million and about 2.5 million of that is, as mentioned, there was a bond refunding in the electric funds. And part of that refunding, there was some additional new construction money that was also acquired. And that's about 2.5 million. So that's part of the increase that hadn't been spent as of June 30, 2013. And then the remainder of the increase is from operations. All right, so let's look at the... This shows the total equity for these major funds that we just looked at. The blue being the current year and the purple being the prior year. You can see all of them either stayed the same or increased some, all equity increased some. So and then the next one is even, I think, more helpful. You'll notice those are quite large, you know, in the water, sewer, electric, water's up around 30 million. That's because it includes the investment in capital assets. And that's where the bulk of it is. So if we look at this, which is just unrestricted equity, so it excludes items such as restricted items such as debt reserves, items restricted impact fee use, and items equity invested in capital assets. So you can see there, the general fund increased as we talked about. And then water, electric also increased, sewer stayed about the same as far as the unrestricted equity that's available for the city's discretion on how to use that, those And then the last item here is the remainder of the city's funds, all the non-major funds and the equity balances. The first five are various capital projects funds that the city has established for accumulating resources for various capital projects. There you can see recreation increased some. And then the two in the middle, debt service, there's two debt service funds there that accumulate resources to pay debt requirements. And then the last four are non-major utility funds, proprietary funds. You see there, irrigation, the storm drain looks a little out of balance there because it's got quite a bit invested in capital assets in the storm drain system there. And I believe all, about 9 million of that is invested in capital assets. The remainder is other items. There you can see there is a, the golf course did go negative to about 244,000 fund deficit there. So something to keep an eye on. And that's the majority of where the, talked about the interfund loans. That's the majority of where the general funds loaning funds to the golf course. So that's the all I had prepared. Any, any other questions? Some good questions there. We certainly appreciate the city and their management and their efforts in helping us complete the audit. We've definitely noticed improvements over the last couple of years.
Any other questions for David? Thank you. And thank your staff again for a very thorough job. We truly appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Where's Mike?
He's down in Arizona for a couple of days.
Playing?
Well, he's presenting some audits down there.
Right.
Let's consider playing for a go.
Yeah.
Thank you again very much. Okay, we'll move on to item six, planning commission appointment, consideration of appointing a 2014 commission chair. I'd like to recommend that we continue the services of Rick Schofield as our planning commission chairman. Any comment on that discussion?
I think that's a good idea. I think he's a good independent thinker, leads those meetings well.
Yeah, I've been to a few meetings and he commands the position and does a good job managing meetings.
Okay, do I need a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, that we appoint 24 Plaid Commission Chair to be current Chair, Rick Schofield.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second.
Aye, aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. Item seven, amended preliminary plat, consideration to approve an amendment to the preliminary plat for sugar plum in the fields located approximately south of 3650 South and east of Camino Real, applicant Walter Plum. It's appropriate for the holidays, sugar plums dancing in your head.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant has requested approval of an amended preliminary plat, again, for the sugar plum in the field subdivision. The applicant recently purchased and subsequently received an approved amendment to the general plan and a zone change to the additional 13.66 acres that are on the southern end of, of the original approved preliminary plat. Thus, the applicant's wishing to add these 13.66 acres, the original 59.0, 56.09 acres, making for a total area for the subdivision of 69.75 acres. The original preliminary plat was approved on September 25 of 2013. The location of this particular project is owned single-family residential, 8,000 square foot minimum, or the R18 zone as we refer to it. The applicant, of course, as stated, wishing to amend the preliminary plat to add these additional lots. Now, the original approval was for 174 home sites and which, which at that time carried a 3.1 dwelling unit per acre ratio. The proposed amended preliminary plat is proposing 222 lots. And this will just barely bump up the dwelling unit per acre ratio to 3.18. So it almost went up 1/10th of a percent on that, which is significantly almost nothing when you're talking 222 lots, I guess. Both of the stated dwelling unit per acre ratios basically fall within the R112 zoning designation, and this is owned R18. There was concern when this came about of everybody felt there would just be, you know, a lot of small lots built. And they came and said, we'll try to keep them above. And they had, of course, situations with the pipes that come out of the debris basin. In fact, that road that runs at that diagonal angle is actually where those drain pipes run. And then the other road, right here where my pin is, is another, another pipe that ties in for that. So they knew they'd have some significant problems getting some alignment. And this is the proposal that they came up with. Now, the request meets the zoning regulations, of course, as required in the city ordinances, and also falls within the subdivision ordinance. The planning commission reviewed the request at their December 18, 2013 meeting. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the amended preliminary plat for sugar plum in the field subdivision to the city councils based on the findings and subject to the original conditions that came with this project back in September. I'll be glad answering the questions the council might have on this project.
Seems pretty straightforward. They're just combining their two parcels into one larger parcel, and they already have the zoning road changed.
Correct. And that's basically just added the extra lots to the, to the southern portion.
I'm having to scan it so I can tell what it says.
Tension, just to hold the water on it. And also, I think all the areas up there are going to be kind of related, I think, to detention areas.
Are those owned by the community or those?
They will have to be as part of the HOA. A note again, lots, if I can bring those up, is we had reference, lots 17 and 18 are owned by the, I think, the canal company or the irrigation company, and they'll work through those of ownership. Also down here, in this particular area, coming out of this corner, which is the corner of Camino Real and 3650 on that shaded arrow, will have to be a drainage issue. Actually, they're going to use this road that you see there and then tie it into 3650 as drainage for emergency times. But don't be alarmed, streets are designed many times to be water carriers. It's not unusual in any way.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll make the motion that we approve the amendment to the preliminary plat for sugar plum in the field subdivision located approximately 3650 South and east of Camino Real, as depicted on the map presented today.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second.
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. Item eight, G, move down to G, public hearing for consideration to approve a zone change, application Z-13-18, requesting to amend the PCD, restricted farm site, plan map, zoning comparison table, and development agreement, applicant Carl Larsen.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, wishing Stewky Farms is, and we kind of knew this was coming after a meeting with them. Let me just get out some diagrams. It'll help Sorry that I'm having to lay this kind of, just so we can get the whole project on the, on the screen. Of course, just to help you out, get started here, this is the meadows at the north end of the project. This is Washington Fields Road. In this wide area is kind of where it runs up that ridge. There's some homes, I can't remember who, I'm drawing a blank of who lives up there. Is it the Gibbys? Gibbys live up there. And so this, again, this is the north area that we're talking about. And the Hancock's, right, it's just down from, from the greenhouses, et cetera. So the applicant has stated is requesting to make a few amendments. Most of them are on this map, and we'll kind of go through. There's roughly five different things that they'll be changing. Basically, the site plan map, which is this, they had to reconfigure it. They're changing some of the villages. Just to make note that Village Four is going, it's changing a density, going from the very low density to the low density. So it just changes the density within the project on that. Also on this map, Village Number 14, which is here, is going from, what was it, a medium-high density, but they're turning it to a residential in this area because it borders roughly out here, you have the Parkway on this, this edge of the project. So they wanted to turn that into a commercial area. Most time we don't have...
All of 14?
All of 14 will become a commercial area on that. Just in, you know, when you look at it in perspective, the city loves to see commercial. It's always a potential for, for tax revenue, et cetera. And they have some plans for that, that they'll come in at a different time.
How much farther from Village 14 is the southern Parkway, Fields, Fields Road intersection?
This is, this is actually the road.
I should say off-ramp. So you got this, the pro-southern Parkway that doesn't exist yet.
Well, it does to this point. They just opened it up today. So this is...
Oh, so it does to that?
It does to the, right here.
To the right to that, that intersection.
Yes. And the road that has been built, that is, that is it. And that's the 90. If you've gone out on the new road, is right there at that intersection. So this is where it belongs. And so it's basically right there on that north end where that new road ties in where the overpass is here. So it's kind of coming, you know, it's all coming, taking place at this point. So...
And the Parkway ends at that overpass, right?
It does. It ends right there. And, and then we're just waiting for this to be tied with the one we just did today at the Washington Dam Road. So that'll be the next, next stage. So with that, that's basically the changes on the site plan map was those two. Also, we'll get into, they've changed the road size that we talked about in some of these other subdivisions. We'll finally get that cleaned up so they don't have to have medians in quite a few places. So, so with that, we'll move on. They're also going to be changing, this is now as part of the text, and just for the council's awareness, the thing that changed on here is, is this particular sentence here, all proposed land uses, and this is the part that's changed, including rentals by private ownership is defined in development, development agreement densities and proposed units within the PCD. What, basically what they're doing is taking advantage that we've, we just had discussion last night about vacation rentals. We have a particular project that we also discussed last night is Coral Ridge does this in Coral Canyon. They're going to define a couple of areas. There will be a couple of villages within this PCD that will be allowed by, by the PCD to have ownerships that people can then rent them out as, as such is the purpose behind that. And that's, you know, what the proposal is, the particular villages. I'll bring back the map.
Is that going to be problematic with our current ordinance as it sits, Drew?
No, because we kind of talked about with PCDs.
I know we kind of talked about it, but our ordinance today says none of that. And that's why I'm wondering if we, if our ordinance today says that if we go ahead and pass this, we have a problem.
No, because we said none of that within, and that's why we only put that, that letter D that we talked about prohibited uses are in the agricultural and the R1 zones. So we left that because, you know, technically, we, Coral Canyon came back and amended theirs to have what they, they call them recreational rentals there. And so with that, because this is a PCD, the city can allow, this is...
As long as it's, I just didn't want us to contradict ourselves with saying our ordinance says this, and then we go ahead and say, well, we passed that when the ordinance said not.
But that's where that ordinance, I put that one fun little sentence in there, unless otherwise...
One word is...
Unless otherwise allowed in this title, they are prohibited. And that's why I put that sentence in there. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't hang that up. So just so you know where they want to do this, it's pretty much on your, it's where they want to amend. And I will have to, I'm going to back up here. They want to make an amendment to the, the development agreement. We're not going to ask for that tonight because I think that is messy. We're going to wait and do the development agreement amendment probably at your next meeting if this passes tonight, just to change that language.
Do you know where on the...
Yeah, I'm going to show you right now on, the one will be, as stated, in Village, it's in the multifamily uses, so Village 12 and 13.
Which are, back down, that's right there.
There are these two that are in between the southern Parkway and Washington Fields Road. And these are a multifamily is how they're defined on their map. So again, we're talking condos, townhouses, et cetera, things like that, much probably like a Coral, the Coral Ridge development. And we'll see how they lay those out when they bring in their subdivisions. So they want to do it in those two villages. And then they want to also allow it in some of the single-family uses, which are going to be Villages Two and Three only, which are also just right here. So basically, in this whole area that you can see where I'm pinned, so Village Two and Village Three, they're asking that those be allowed. Those will be single, single standby homes, single-family residential, but they want to have that, that ability to use those as also owner, you know, slash rental is how they're going to put that. So those are the four villages affected by that change only out of the entire project.
Similar where the requirements for the automatic sprinklers and...
They will be made... They will be made known of that when they come in with their building permits, et cetera. Or reminded of that, I guess that's the word I want to use, is reminded of that. So, that's the change for the one item in two-point-one, as part of the written text. The next change is all they did, so when they made those changes, and they changed the site plan, of course, it changed densities, so they are using this particular page in two-point-two, two-point-three, changing what densities now are after those changes were made on their site plan. So it's just house cleaning, you made one change on one page, you got to clean it up and make it right on the other page. And so that's the land use summary now, the acreages that have changed, the village numbers, the densities, et cetera. So that's the reason behind two-point-two and two-point-three. And then also, they have to then update their, I don't know if I can back out enough, but this is what most of the PCDs do, is they have a comparison of what Washington City is, and what our PCD is going to allow, whether it be densities, setbacks, et cetera. And this page, they just updated that, again, with the change of the villages, to bring that current with this proposed change. And it's just a comment, we'll see that on the next proposed amendment also, this is a very important page that our building inspectors use and stuff when they bring in subdivisions, et cetera. And these are the modifications that Stewie Farms is presenting versus the current Washington City, and that's why people do a PCD, it's for change of some things that are standard within the city. So, that comparison table will be changed and upgraded to the new villages, and then, one of the biggest reasons for the amendment is updating the road widths, and the two main ones were the, let me see if I've got those written down, maybe not, but we'll zoom in. For Stewie Farms Parkway, Groves Parkway, and Mountain View Parkway, they went from one-hundred-and-six width streets down to the eighty-foot street section. This will allow, because of, the lanes will be smaller, then they won't have to have those medians in front of some of those subdivisions that we talked about, because of the size and the spacing for intersections gets closer together. It's not a spread out, because one-hundred-and-six requires greater distances because of the traffic and the possible speeds. So this is basically the reason they're updating the cross-street section is for those three roads right there to be moved out of one-hundred-and-six into the eighty category, which we knew would be coming.
With the nearly two-thousand units, but they anticipate out there, are these smaller streets still going to be adequate?
Mike, you don't have any problem with it, do you? I mean, we've talked about them, but we'll have Mike come up and give the street version.
We actually suggested they make the change on that, because the issue we had was spacing. And the eighty-foot cross-section, that would be comparable to the Fields Road. So an eighty-foot cross-section would move, one eighty-foot cross-section would move the total traffic in the whole development, so. It's more inadequate, and then they actually intersect into Washington Fields there, which is one-hundred-and-six, by the way. So, we feel very comfortable with it.
So the original design was just way overdesigned?
It was. But that's what they proposed in their original PCD, so.
Thanks, Mike.
And just to add on to that, this is a different, kind of, you know, different developer than the original. Ence was the original one behind this, and then they lost the project, and now it's back in Carl's hands again, so they've kind of made those adjustments, so.
If I remember right, part of the original one in those medians was actually decorative, had trees and stuff, so it's more of a decorative.
Yeah, they really went above and beyond, and that's back when the boom was happening, they wanted to make it that much more than other peoples' and proposed projects, and it was over, superfluous, that's the word I want to use.
I kind of like the superfluous.
Yeah. Well, this will still, as Mike was saying, you know, with those, just one of these eighty-foot cross-sections would handle the number within it, and now we have three of them, plus the one-hundred-and-six. I think he feels very comfortable with not worrying about the traffic in that area with those main roads, so. So with that, those are the changes for the Stewie Farms amendment. And the planning commission reviewed it at their December fourth meeting, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendment Z dash thirteen dash eight of the zone change request, amending the Stewie Farms PCD. And again, I want to drop the development agreement this time after talking to Denise, we don't want to mix up with the zone change, because it is an apple and an orange, and we'll bring that back to you, even though you had copies of it. And we'll amend the development agreement at the next meeting, so. We're not concerned about, I think you've read it, if you've read those two pages, it's just changing the definitions and allowing for those rentals to come in at that section.
So, the agenda that says we're considering the change to the site plan, the zoning comparison table, and the development agreement, we can strike that.
We want to strike the development agreement out of it at this point, and then we'll bring it back to you at the next meeting, if this passes. Because if this doesn't, it won't do any good to amend the development agreement.
Any other questions for Drew? This is a public hearing, anybody out there that's involved with this development, or wants to share? You okay?
I was hoping that somebody could come and talk about the big roads reduction. It's interesting, because those medians do make a nice, especially when they're planted or dig real, yeah, they add to the feel of the village. I'm just trying to wrap my head around the size of the concept here. Two-thousand units is similar to what part of our city?
I won't put this in saying it's as big as Coral Canyon, but it's, I would probably, if I were to guesstimate, probably two-thirds, but Coral Canyon probably has a lot more open spaces because of the contours of the land. Volume-wise, we may have about the same amount of housing, et cetera, but Coral Canyon just spread out more, because again, we have all those drops and rises and maces and stuff in Coral Canyon. So it's pretty comparable, I would almost think, when the houses are all finished and the volume of people, so.
Mayor, if we don't have anybody, I'll move that we close the public hearing.
There's a motion to close the public hearing. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Aye.
Truman Eye. Second Miller Eye.
Truick Eye.
Thank you, and we'll move on to item I, excuse me, item H, consideration to approve an ordinance adopting the zone change request, Z dash thirteen dash, is it eight or eighteen? Okay. To amend the PCD for Stewie Farms, we need to eliminate the development agreement portion of that, correct?
Correct. Mayor, I would move that we approve the ordinance adopting zone change request, Z dash thirteen dash eighteen, to amend the PCD for Stewie Farms.
Thank you, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I'm just, sorry, Mayor, just to make it clear that the motion is for the site plan and the zoning comparison table.
Correct, yes, deleting the development agreement, that's correct.
Okay, Truick Eye.
Second Miller Eye.
Truman Eye.
Nice and high.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item I, public hearing for consideration to approve zone change application, Z dash thirteen dash nineteen, requesting to amend the Sienna Hills PCD by amending parcels three and four to relocate proposed school site and density. Applicant Aaron Langston, Sitla.
Aaron, I'm going to try to wing this, just jump up and yell at me if I'm going. With this change, it also triggered quite a few other little things, and we're going to have, take the opportunity in this amendment also, you see quite a few exhibits with you, and we'll try to get through them quick, a lot of them look the same, but they are different slightly. This started out, because the school district does want to purchase a bigger piece, the piece that was set aside. Example was down where my pen was, originally down there, kind of by that park, that if you've been through Sienna Hills, but it wasn't big enough for an elementary, so this kind of stirred the change, and while they were doing it, Sitla took the opportunity to fix some other things that have already changed, and agreements that the city and them have come into since the original approval. So, we'll start out, so they're going to be changing, of course, the site plan map here, moving the new school site, which is now up in this area, which is still kind of out in the dirt area, it's kind of hard to tell unless you drive out. You can go, if you're familiar with the copper leaf subdivisions right here in this blue, and if you go past it quite a bit, then you'll see the site right here is where the school is being moved to. That's, that kind of drove the main change, we also, so that changed the original parcel two, and all these other ones that you see that we've talked about, this will be affecting parcel two, three, four, fifteen, eight, two, seventeen, and then we're updating the density table map, which is this map here with those changes to those particular parcels as part of this PCD. So it's just moving and changing a few things because of situations we found over time, some of the ones down here in the south where that trailhead, and subsequently finding the old dump, subsequently all these things that the council's, I think, fully aware of, of some of the things that we've come across over the years, that'd bring that up to date. So, the site plan, again, is updating the table up here that defines the densities within each one of those parcels, and then moving and rearranging some of these parcels to the updated size, and after having some engineering, this particular four, originally, they kind of broke it up and put this piece in, because they found some engineering problems, et cetera. So they're just wanting to update because of conditions that have happened since the original approval. Also with this, they'll be, have to accordingly change the text, and we'll get into that now, so it'll be, the site plan will be changed. We just got through talking about a comparison table, that's the one for two-point-two that we just talked about in Stewie Farms, they're updating, of course, the one in Sienna Hills, with those changes in densities and the move on some of those parcels. So this is just being an updated comparison between, again, Washington City standard, and what Sienna Hills has within it on setbacks, et cetera, depending on what parcel you're part of, so upgrading that. And stop me if you ever have any questions on any one of these as we go through. This one just has quite a few of just changes in these updates, so. The three-point-one is just changing the land use, as found in the book, and again, it's just a map of corresponding with that. So again, you can see, pretty much these maps all look alike, and it's just the foundation of what the whole project is. And this is found in the text. Moving along after that, three-point. Oh, I did the three-point-one just now, three-point-eight. Basically, the significant change here is eight C, which is the height. Aaron, I may have you just pop up, because you're going to probably explain this better than I could, why you needed to. Yeah, I'll just have Aaron, kind of, some of these are, I'm going to let him go, because he'll be a lot quicker about it, and why they, this changes they had is this, so we're talking about building.
Aaron Langston with School Trust Lands Administration. Okay, three-point-eight, there's actually a couple of different things that we'll be looking at real quickly on three-point-eight. But the first, there was some text in there that said, essentially, we would allow mostly single-story homes, and not that many two-story. So we just struck that one sentence out to clarify, we're going to allow two-story homes in there, we're not necessarily trying to limit that, but we want to make sure that it's very clear that you cannot build above thirty-five feet. So that thirty-five-foot height restriction has always been in place, we're simply leaving it there and saying, yes, it is okay, you can build a two-story home, as indicated throughout the PCD, but the PCD, for whatever reason, previously just tried to limit that, saying predominantly, we will have single-story homes, but you can always build a thirty, excuse me, a thirty-five-foot home. So that's what that change is there in item C. As we move to three-point-eight I, it talks about pools and spas, we're simply clarifying the setbacks there. It was just written kind of weirdly, where you look at it and kind of scratch your head, saying, "What does that mean?" So we're just clarifying that the setbacks are within the city standards for the pools and spas. In item M, it talks about custom homes, specifically, custom homes were not allowed to be two-story homes. We're just striking that. They had specifically with custom homes, you cannot exceed the twenty-five-foot height limit, so we're striking that, just saying, yeah. With custom homes, we are comfortable with them building a two-story home, and we're comfortable with bringing that thirty-five-foot height limit, which would be consistent with the rest of the PCD. Three-point-eight O, guest houses. Again, this was kind of one of those weird things, as you read through the PCD, where it allows guest houses to be built, but for some reason, it required that the entire home be constructed first, after the CO was issued, then at that point, an owner could go in and construct a guest house. So we just thought, well, that's kind of odd, we might as well allow them to build the guest house while they're building the home. So just a minor little change there. As we move on to three-point-eleven, there's some signage there, we actually did have a little issue with this in Sienna Hills that caused this change, but previously, we had restricted flag poles. Now, that sounds like kind of a harsh thing, and the way that we handled that was, we allowed house-mounted poles to display, for example, the American flag, but the PCD said you cannot erect just a freestanding flag pole. As you may expect, we had a lot of residents, or at least a few residents, saying, "Hey, we want to display the American flag," and we responded, "We're all for that, please do, just make sure it's on your house-mounted pole." For a lot of people, that wasn't good enough, and they thought, hey, you know, we're in America, we want to fly the flag, we want it to be up high, we want to, you know, we're patriotic, to which we were sympathetic with that, we thought, yeah, so are we, we'd love to see you do that. So, the way that we compromise, as we said, we'll allow the flag poles, but you can't go higher than thirty-five feet, because we're kind of restricting that, so that people can still enjoy their views, if you can keep it to thirty-five feet, we are okay with it. So that is the proposal here in the PCD. Four-point-two-point-F, this is setbacks and coverages. Drew already put this table up, but what happened was, back in two thousand nine, we had one of the parcels come in under Garrett Bangater. He was converting some townhomes to the garden home project. When he did that, he had to update the setbacks for his garden homes, and we had the table updated, but we failed to update the narrative in the PCD. So we caught that, this just simply updates the table, so that the two are now consistent. So it looks like a change in the setbacks, it's actually not, it just essentially goes with exactly what was approved back in two thousand nine. So, in a nutshell, those would be the changes we have in the narrative of the PCD. I don't know if you have any questions on that, or comments, or want me to elaborate further. As we go through, we do have other underlying maps that also would be updated. As you go through the PCD, if you're somewhat familiar with it, each section essentially shows the same map, it's the base map. And then as you go through, for example, section five, it's going to show you, here's what sewer flows are. As you go through this section, it's going to show you different things within that same map. So we use the same base map that we presented here, and then just for all of the other sections, we've just simply drawn arrows to show, for example, where the sewer will go, or where drainage will go, and so forth like that. One thing on here, we did show and identify where the detention basin is. When the original map was built, we knew roughly where it would be. Now that the detention basin is built, we've actually drawn it in as an as-built, so it's accurate, it's exactly where it is. So, there are just a few little things like that, but I'm happy to answer any question. So there are just a few little things like that, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I'll shoot, Aaron. And I might have missed this. I walked in a little bit late, but the school site, can you point to me where the school site was prior to, in the current PCD?
Yes, it was just below the park on parcel 15A. And the reason that we had a change there, the site is actually big enough in terms of acreage, but it was too narrow. So when this PCD was designed, the school district didn't have a set width defined. And so as the school district came in to look for a, a school site, and again, this would be an elementary school site, they recognized we can't do it wide enough because they have to have their school situated such that they can be elevated and look down on the fields. So they can't stack the fields. You can't have a baseball field here, and then behind that, put another field for whatever other purposes there might be. They need to look at it kind of in a panoramic so that any teacher can just look down for the safety of the kids. So in terms of doing that, it became impossible to squeeze it under that 15A2. So we just gave the engineer the Siena Hills map and just said, if this were a clean slate, where could you make it work?
You referred to the school district's engineer?
The school district's engineer. That's correct.
So they're comfortable with the access and the size?
Oh, absolutely.
What is it, about 15-acre parcel?
It's actually a little bit smaller. It's about 12 acres.
Okay.
So they chose parcel four. At that point, we worked pretty closely with our engineers to make sure that it wouldn't adversely affect our development on parcel four for the balance of the residential component. And then we've just worked with both the developer and the school district to make sure that the site would be compatible. So one of the things that's nice about this is you knew, if you kind of zoom out and look at the Siena Hills as a, you know, from a higher elevation, you can see the school district would essentially be right in the center of Siena Hills. So we thought that would be a pretty nice amenity. So it's pretty much in walking distance from anywhere in Siena. So, good question. Thank you, Aaron. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Aaron?
Oh, thank you. Plant list. I did skip over that. Section six in these notes here. Just a very brief update on the plant list. Siena Hills, when it was first passed by the city council, essentially adopted the Coral Canyon plant list. Now, as you know, Coral Canyon has a lot higher population, if you will, than Siena Hills does. Over time, that plant list has changed. We've kept it very constant at Siena Hills. But we, we thought while we're doing this, let's just take the current adopted plant list from Coral to Siena Hills because with so many plants going on at Coral Canyon, we've better learned, this works, this works, this doesn't work. Let's get these out and do this. And so it's just simply a reflection of what we have at Coral Canyon right now. Thank you, Drew. I did forget that one.
Aaron, where on the map that's displayed there, the dinosaur tracks that are currently out there, are those going to be in one of the open spaces?
For, I'm sorry, what was that?
The dinosaur tracks?
Oh, the dinosaur tracks, okay. The dinosaur track is in the open space. Have you seen them? Okay.
Several times.
Okay, so the dinosaur tracks, as you know, you go down into that ravine. That ravine will be left as open space. So, yeah, that, that would be completely undisturbed. There are petroglyphs back up in there as well, but we are also trying to protect. Eventually, we will have a trail system in there, or at least we are planning to have a trail system in there with a little kiosk and so forth to say, this is what this is, you know, please, pretty please, don't mess with it or anything. So we're working through those issues right now, but all of that is in the open space and in the drainages, and we intend to keep that as open space. So, thank you. Great question. Anything else for me?
No, any other questions? Good thing you updated that plant list, you know. No, I'm not at all. I have a lot at my house, mostly are weeds.
So with it, I kind of just invited Aaron into kind of in the middle of my report because he can get through it a lot quicker. He's, like I say, been putting this all together for Sitla. So with that said, the planning commission reviewed this request at their December 8 meeting. They unanimously recommended approval of Z-13-19 for the zone change request, amending the Siena Hills PCD project plan. And of course, with, with the findings, and I did put conditions, just so whether all stated all the things that we're doing on there. So, and with the ordinance, there are exhibits that I gave Denise, and that's all these maps that we just went through. They'll have that if the council so wishes to approve. So I'll be, that answer any questions that you might have on this proposal?
Thank you, Drew. Again, this is a public hearing. Any of you out there that have a burning desire to express your feelings about this, it's a nice project. It's a very nice If not, I'm going to count to three, then you're, one, two, three, I guess we're.
I'm here. I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing.
Second motion.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Turaka, Seg Miller, I.
Truvin, I.
Nice, I.
Thank you, gentlemen. We move item J, consideration to approve an ordinance adopting zone change request Z-13-19-19 to amend the PCD Siena Hills parcels three and four.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance adopting zone change request Z-13-19 to amend the PCD Siena Hills parcels three and four.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Nice, I.
Truvin, I.
Daley, I.
Seg Miller, I.
Turaka.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great evening. Okay, we'll move on back up to item 8A, public hearings related ordinances. Public hearing for consideration to approve, excuse me, a zone change application Z-13-15, requesting to change the present zone from open space to PUD zone located approximately 1800 north, north of North Bridge Estates and 1200 west, north of, end of Concord Parkway, applicant
Okay, thank you for that pause. The estate, it's his request for his own change of approximately 28.665 acres. This is pretty much located at the far end of even Green Springs that will be built as part of the Washington Vista development, the Matlow project that you see going up there right now, the phase four, which you can kind of see the north end of it right there, where my finger is. So that road still hasn't been built. You can see here's where the end of Green Springs is currently. And then this will be north of that up to this particular request that you see before you.
Is that large public street? Is that the?
That is what we refer to as Washington Parkway Extended. I guess that's officially what we got to get, I got to get used to calling, calling it. And I'm glad to because I really liked that name, but that will be the far extension of the Parkway all the way from the interchange number 13 as it goes through all this Sitla property. It ends up up here in the north is where this, this will be.
That's the road, depending on how the hearings and things go with the habitat that may eventually something connect over to.
Well, that's actually the northern corridor. They're talking about that. Those dotted lines up there, that's the northern corridor up there. Maybe. Nobody knows exactly kind of where it's going yet, but, but yeah, that's what those dotted lines up there on the top right-hand corner, their left-hand corner would be. So.
So we probably ought to call, I know that in, in a lot of those discussions, they're actually calling that northern corridor Washington Parkway. That's what it's being referred to as, so.
Yeah.
Careful duplicating those names.
Yeah, right now, we're, well, like I say, this one will be our, the extension of our road. Now where it comes into play?
Not in love with Washington Parkway Extended.
I'm not going to, that's just what I'm saying. The extended portion, I'm not saying that's part of the name.
Just kind of the northern half.
Just the northern, northwest half, yeah, or the northwest end roughly of, of the Parkway, which starts at Telegraph and will wind all the way to this point and tie into Green Springs there at that intersection. So with that, the request is to change the current open space zoning to a proposed planned unit development of the PUD zoning designation. The general plan land use designation for this location currently is low-density residential, which allows for zoning categories of R18, R110, and R112, and density ratios of three to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. The surrounding general plan designations around this particular proposed property is low-density to the south and east and open space to the west and north. The surrounding zoning designations are open space to the northwest and south, and single-family residential R110, which is a 10,000 square foot to the east, which is again, part of that Matlow project we refer to as Washington Vista. The applicant is wishing to rezone the, the piece to the PUD zoning designation in conjunction with two other proposed zone changes, which we will hear subsequently after this, as a, as a entire project. So we, just to keep that in mind, will be basically one developer will be doing all these three, these three pieces that we'll be talking about tonight. And they, they will consist of a proposed R115 and a proposed R18 that will then join with this, that particular PUD. If I can just put a map on to give you clarification So this was the proposed project at the planning commission. And again, the dark green area is the PUD that we're talking about. The R18 request is this, it looks kind of green on there, but online it's kind of a beige. And then the R115 here. Now, as you notice on this map, you see some hashed out area. This is the piece that the council agreed to consider as an annexation area. And we're just throwing this as what the proposal is for that. But this piece, of course, is not part of this tonight, but it's just to give you reference of the annexation area that, that this owner is trying to bring into the city also. So again, back to the PUD on this particular request. They will be, and I'll go back to plan. As, as the council can see, these are townhomes side by side. This is the, the layout of, of the particular project. You can see there, right in the middle, there's a, an open space area, and it's, it's kind of a, I think it's a vista that goes up, not down, that they're going to leave as open space to help kind of break the project up and not feel it's so heavy and so dense with that, that break in between. You have, I think, in, in your, your packets, designs of the building, but again, we can only copy in black and white, so I'd like to bring on the, the color. It'll help probably These are kind of the two-dimensional views. They will be in a series of fourplexes or duplexes. As you can see, the duplexes are on the right, the fourplexes are on the left. The garages, of course, will be facing the street. And then I'll, let me put the perspective view on here. Kind of helps enhance that. These are them, a little bit more three-dimensional somewhat. So again, when the garage, you see the garage units, they'll be facing the street, and all the windows is, is basically out the back for better views, et cetera. As you can see with the fourplexes, it's basically two stories of the two inner units, and then on each end will be single-story. You can tell these are flat, flat-designed roofs. This is a project that they're proposing that Henry Walker would like to build, that they will be the, the builder within this PUD. And here are the home designs and what they'll be using as, as finishes, as you can see. So. There is a total of 116 dwelling units. They'll have, of course, as part of it, the required But you can see there right at the entrance, at the intersection, there'll be a pool area with clubhouse, et cetera. The swimming pool, of course, will be there for the residents. A large hillside open space falls in the middle of the development, breaking the project into two halves. Parking is always a question in multidevelopments with the applicant providing the required parking for each home and additional visitor parking scattered throughout the development. Now, there's actually an extra 133 stalls with the project on there.
Those are the gray areas we could see.
Yeah, the, and I'll just point those. And that's just, yeah, those three, and then you can see them scattered throughout the project. You know, let alone the, the two-car garages, plus the driveways, plus these extra parking areas. It's probably been the biggest or the most generous that we've seen with, with the project for, for extra parking. As you see on this one. The rest of the project falls in line with the PUD zoning requirements as outlined in the zoning regulations. The staff reviewed the proposal, found that it fits within the general plan, found that it meets the subdivision ordinance, when that would come for later down the road. And the planning commission reviewed the request at their December 4 meeting, and they unanimously recommended approval of Z-13-15 for the zone change from open space to the PUD to the city council, based on the findings and subject to the conditions below. And if you'd like to answer any questions the council might have on this project.
Little red symbols are that are scattered throughout.
They're, it's landscaping, so it'll be associated with a particular type of tree is what that is. Just, I'm not sure which tree that is, but, but that's generally what that is. It's just a symbol for landscaping and tree for vegetation. A red plum, maybe that's what it is. Just so you're aware, I'm pretty sure that the line that you see up here, I think, is the border of, of the reserve. I don't think I'm mistaken, so it'll be right up against the, yeah, it's already, there's a fence, I think, existing. If you've been out there, there's that.
Will the development, will it?
We'll have to ask them. Yeah, if, if that's their neighbor, I don't know why we'd require it unless they wanted to do it.
Thanks, Drew. Any questions for Drew? Once again, it's a public hearing. Any of you out there that want to?
Kyle. Kyle Paisley, Director for the Southern Utah Office for the State of Utah School and Institutional Trust Lands Administration. You can call us Sitla if you'd like. We are the underlying landowners of this piece for each of these three zoning change requests that are coming for you today. This is part of what we affectionately refer to in our office as the orphan piece of Green Springs because it's kind of off, separated from the main 1,200-acre piece that we've been in to talk to, to you about in the past. This came as part of, if, if you remember, the general plan amendments that we brought in a year, year and a half ago with Green Springs, asking for various different changes to bring them into lines with our future development plans. What you see before you will be the fitting of what our plans were, what we discussed with you at the general plan amendment changes, and don't represent any significant deviations from what we've, we've expected and what we've discussed with you in the past and what you've approved in the past. Just a little talk about this particular piece here. The hillside open space is part of the hillside protection ordinance that we worked with the city a few years ago to adopt and, and helped with planning in that regard. We figure this is a good place for this particular use. It still does beat the, as Drew mentioned, the zoning requirements for the general plan, but it's, it's hemmed in by the public street that you can see here. It's, and then a ravine on one side, the tortoise reserve on the other side. And these represent valleys where the, the building will be lowered so that it's out of any view shed, and especially with the flat roof, that would be important in this particular instance. We felt because of the nature of that and having it hemmed in there, that would be a good place to, to try something along those lines and feel like the market will respond to that. But again, this is part of a significant planning effort that we've been involved in with both yourself and ourselves for the last couple of years. And it's just a fruition of what we've already, already had approved as an underlying general plan. But as, as the property owner, I'd be happy to answer any questions or I'll come up for each of them. I'm sure there'll be many more questions throughout the night, but if you have any, I'd be happy to entertain.
Do you know what those red icons are?
Those red icons are lovely trees. Those red icons are lovely trees that will bloom red in the autumn months, I've been told. Red plum or a, what kind of maple? Yeah, some sort of maple that does well in the heat. I don't know. It'll be really nice, I'm sure. So, any other questions? I'm sure, like I said, I'll be back up. Thank you.
Thank you Kyle.
Hi, I'll introduce myself. I have a little different role than what some of you may have been used to over the years. Jim Raines, I'm along with Bush and Gudgeo. I work directly with Mr. Brennan. Give you a little background on Mr. Brennan. Mr. Brennan owns the majority of private land in the desert tortoise habitat, just on top of the hill. And we're in the process of doing an exchange that will allow the integrity of HCP and a second ten permit to remain intact. So that the rest of the county doesn't turn into desert tortoise habitat. And we can continue to move forward and keep the economy running and moving. That's the principal reason Mr. Brennan's here. Mr. Brennan is a very well capitalized land developer, developed almost all of the high-end projects in Sun Valley, Idaho. Did numerous projects in Palm Springs area, in the desert. Many, many projects in central California, San Luis Obispo and other areas. So very well capitalized, very knowledgeable gentleman. And most of our exchange properties are in Washington City. And if it comes about, we own several thousand acres within your city, so you can see a lot of us. So we want to be very careful in our first project to develop a solid relationship with the neighbors and members of the staff and council and the planning commission. To that end, we've had four separate meetings with neighbors, principally North Bridge Estates neighbors. The last one of those was Monday night, I think we had 27 or 28 people there. Trying to educate and inform, not educate, but inform them of what our plans are. As you know, zone changes are difficult because in a straight zone change, we can't show you the plan. We have to talk about generalities. So we want an opportunity to go over a plan. We've modified our plan about four different times to try to meet specific conditions of those neighbors. And we'll talk more about that when we get into the other zones that they're more applicable to. This project, as you can see, 106 foot Washington Parkway. You're correct, Jeff, I think it was, is that some places we refer that to that as a northern corridor. The problem with that is the northern corner corridor is defined by the MPO, supposed to be a freeway and grades separated 300 foot right away like the southern parkway. And the 106 foot in Washington Parkway with intersections and projects accessing doesn't meet the criteria for the northern parkway. So that's why we've come up with an alternate for the northern parkway. It's years and years and years down the road. But we feel like that the traffic needs of the area for Washington City is very well mapped by the Washington Parkway. And that's how it was planned. It was planned through SITLA and many years ago, went through the whole process and set the alignment and the size of the Washington Parkway as the 106 foot street. So as you can see, we're really bordered on, you know, the north by the region of Desert Reserve. And that is fenced right now. And we, the HCP has a specific fence that we built. It's blocked up the first two or three feet and can be wrought iron above that. So we will comply with that fence. We'll be a nice decorative fence, not the chain link that tortoise wire. And we're hoping to work out a deal where we have a trailhead in this part of the project. So these residents, as long as the entire Greensprings, Washington City area can access that 40,000 plus acres of open space up there. We do have one trailhead now that's over in the other corner. We'll talk about the other zone change, but we're hoping to get a second one in this area. The wash area here, directly above the wash area, there's a significant ridge. And if you look at the rest of our project, the estates portion, the North Bridge and others, really can't see these units because these units down here sit down in the hole. And we took quite care, you see our road ringing the top of the hill there. And the reason we did that and not put units on top of the hill, we didn't want a unit hovering on top of the hill. We wanted it back off the crest of the hill so that hill would block them. And so not only our view shed, but the neighbors' view shed wouldn't be impacted. We felt like an attached building units made sense in this area because we're surrounded by that open space and a five-way roadway. And just felt like it laid out better. Plus, we are under contract with Henry Walker Homes to build all these units, not just these, but all the single-family units. We've, they've come up with a plan called the escapes of Greensprings. Some of you may be familiar with the escapes of Entorada. Very high-end home project that caters large, large percentage to second home buyers. And this will be very similar to the best-selling product right now, which is Coral Ridge and Coral Canyon. But even higher end of that, with a type of architecture which we feel protects the view space. View shed of not only our additional property, but our neighbors. We also feel like that this is really the icing on the greensprings. As you go up Greensprings, I know it very well, my name's probably on 85 to 90% of the flats in the Greensprings area. And we really feel like that this is really icing on the cake for a very nice area. We want to make sure it's done right. When we originally proposed, we proposed under the model that the rest of Greensprings was developed under where a developer develops lots and sells to, you know, builders who build one or two homes a year. And that was our model we proposed in SITLA, but after we were successful in winning the RFP, we started approaching builders and Henry Walker came to us with the escapes of Greensprings idea. And we modified our plan and we modified our semitels tonight to meet that. We just feel like it's the best possible scenario there. You have a consistency in architecture, you have a consistency in builders. You have homes that will be a large percentage second homes. So it addresses some of the traffic concerns the neighbors had. We did go ahead and do a full blown traffic study at the zone change stage. The public works has that, Mike can answer any questions on that. But it basically says that our plan can handle existing roads and what we're planning, the traffic's adequate for it. We can go into the details of that maybe a little bit more in when we talk about where we talk tied to Concord because traffic on Concord Drive is a very big concern to residents. We've heard that. So, not to ramble on too much, it's gonna be a long night, but do you have any questions? It's a unique area. It's isolated by the tortoise habitat and arterial roadways. It's unique in topography, the way it sits and lies. We just feel like it fits well with the escapes of Greensprings concept. And to have a second home, build a product in here, we think is a good fit for a unique piece of ground. It's that the topography and roadways really dictate shape and use of it.
Jim, this upper interior road that ends up there, that's never going to connect anything, correct? It's not.
No, actually, the Washington Vista's upper end, they have a road plan there, so we're corresponding to their planned road.
That road's sufficient in size to handle the traffic that would connect to that?
Yeah. We're just trying, we're trying to conform to their plan. We don't need it, but it makes sense to have connectivity between neighborhoods. And the red are just pretty trees, guys, sorry. You can blame Brandy, she picked that color.
Thanks Jimmy.
Any other questions? Has Brandy made the transition as well?
No, no, Brandy still works there. It's just me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll come back and answer any questions.
Thanks Jim. Anybody else?
Colleen Granger. I live in the Silverstone area. And I'm here with someone from Shadow Bluffs, and none of us were invited to any meetings to discuss what was going on during the last year and a half. Just some concerns. We all know the impact on that intersection on I-15 and Greensprings. And to say there won't be any impact there, we already know how very great that impact is on that intersection. I think you need to consider that in your planning. Also, if we were to add 1,200 sites, I don't know how many sites, how many thousands of people over these three projects, but is there a site for an additional chapel? Is there a site for additional school? We have a very small park on that side of the freeway. It has two pickleball courts, both of them have severe cracks in them, nobody can use them. And there's a, I think there's a little water thing that doesn't work most of the time. So really, what is the impact on parks and open space for the people in that area, which is pretty limited as it is? And if we're sited right next to the Red Cliffs and the Tortoise Preserve, where is there space for these additional facilities that need to occur if we add that many people in that area? And so I'm just hoping that you'll consider that in your planning and also consider, I like the idea that those roofs are flat. I live on Old Horse Road, which is butts so Greensprings. And on the other side is where the chapel is and all those new homes are going in. I've lost because they built up, they built up the hill across from Greensprings. They built that up so they could add different levels of homes there that have views. But I've probably lost 50 feet of my view. They've blocked all of my view on the left of my home and continued to build two-story homes there, which continued to block. And they built that up, they probably added 30 feet when they built that up so it could get more homes in there. And then they did two-story homes there. So I hear that they're going to do flat homes out of consideration for people, but I haven't seen that consideration yet. Certainly not where my home is and my view is completely blocked. That's the hot side of the sun, so maybe that doesn't matter. But just, just in your planning, schools, parks, churches. They're talking about a large impact in a fairly small area. And that intersection is horrendous, as we all know. So please consider those things.
Maybe just informationally, we actually met with the school district personnel about a month ago, three weeks to a month ago. And made them aware that there was some development coming this direction and that they should start working on school sites, which they promptly said they were going to. So I know there is some activity.
They really want one north of the highway.
As we all know. People flow towards Costco. You know, they're not going to go back to Salt Lake to get on their freeway. They're going to flow towards I-15 to the south.
That's why I think it's so key, this corridor that we're talking about that goes across, because then it ties in the interconnectivity of the whole community with Main Street coming into that, exit 13 coming into that. Gives us, kind of like our bodies, separate different arteries that we can flow out of.
The impact's all going to be to that intersection and I just guarantee it will. And I just think we don't have a good solution for that intersection.
You're correct, that intersection is a real problem and it'll continue to be a problem. And I know there's a lot of studies being done and what kind of redesign needs to be done there. And so in the future, there will be something happening to improve the flow, but it is a problem there.
Well, I would look to see what your planning is more than just adding homes is. What is the planning for that? What is the planning for schools? What's the planning for churches? If we're going to add that many people in a very small area that all flow into Greensprings Drive.
See, we get to spend more time, we get to spend more time planning roads than we do schools and churches because those are out of our realm.
I know.
But, but sometimes we talk about schools and churches, usually it's just in the approval or whatever process. From the road standpoint, I think we've got a pretty good plan, which is we've always just had the one Greensprings Drive. And when you look at the master concept for the whole area, there will be Main Street that also is a main artery that goes north, which currently just stops at the north of Main Street. And then also the Washington Parkway. So we're going to have three artery type roads that feed up in and out. I hope, but I believe that that'll alleviate some of all of this new growth on the Greensprings interchange.
My stance of it is, is that it won't because the movement is always towards St. George, over towards Santa Clara. Even a parkway that takes people up into the Amaran Valley is going to alleviate the problem because that's not where people want to go. And so I think the movement's going to continue right where it is on that frontage road and right into that intersection. And unless we build access over the top of the industrial area, which is kind of what I think they should do, but nobody's asking.
Well, I think that the master plan with St. George City does have that tying in. If we can get that corridor to come clear through, that's, like you say, the key component is getting through the preserve and some of those things. And that's actually, I said on the MPO, and so I've kind of got a little inside information as to what's moving there. That's why I was concerned with what we're doing with this, with this corridor, because we are deeply concerned with that corridor coming clear through for all communities to tie in and diversify. Because there is, I know St. George is bringing one off the top of their industrial park down into St. George and also off the top of the Red Cliffs in there. And then of course you have SR-18 that gets the other side of it. So if it all comes together the way, it's master plan.
I think development is inevitable, but I don't think density is inevitable. And I do think that in your approval process, you need to seriously be thinking about what kind of density we can actually handle in that area. It's changed enormously in the last several years since I've been there. So, thank you for listening.
Sure.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Just wanted to stand and go Kyle Paisley with SITLA. I forget, I have to do that every time I stand up. Just to address the planning concerns, it is a concern to look at that. And as you are aware, we are probably the major landowner in Washington City. And we have spent, and I know I've been at several meetings where we've talked about this, considerable money on planning, not just for housing and commercial property, but we have, we meet with the school district at least every other month. I meet with church representatives probably on an every other month basis to update them on our plans as well as UDOT. So we have a firm grasp on what is needed, where is needed. We do have sites where it's appropriate spaced on our properties, based on the demographics and the marketing studies that we've done, so that those things are taken care of. And we do move forward with that and we update the planning quite regularly with those three institutions, knowing that the city doesn't have control over, you know, churches and schools necessarily. You have a little bit more impact with roads and we try to meet with the city as much as we can to do that as well. But I just want to emphasize that, that there is planning taking place among some of the private entities. And because we have the resources to do it, we probably do more of it than any other developer in the area.
And obviously, we've heard some specific concerns. Can you give us any specific discussions about places for schools in that area, places for churches in that area that's in the works?
Some of the things are, of course, private negotiations that you don't want to let out of the bag for various reasons. In the general plan amendment that came before you for the other space of the 1,200 acres, the balance that lays across the drainage to the, to the east, you have school sites planned there as well as a couple of chapel sites that are planned there.
The master plan identified those, didn't it?
Yes, yes, they did. They did identify that. Planning schools is not just a matter of just plopping a school in place. When we meet with the school district and we do some significant demographic studies as to what kind of homes there are, where the children are, the school district has switched to a very walking intense performance base for their schools if they can. Of course, that's not always doable, but where the children can walk to the schools. And so you want to place those around the highest densities of family homes. A lot of these homes you see up here will not be family homes, they'll be second homes, vacation homes, retirement homes. You won't have a high density of children. It's not that you won't have any. No one can guarantee that, but you won't have a high density of children. That's not the marketing demographic or planning that we have there. Where we do, you'll see, as in Sienna Hills, we work closely with the school district to make that work and to make that as centralized and as economic and scaled for both them and ourselves as we can. So there are some specifics there. We have worked with UDOT. I know there are some specific things on the table for mile post 10 and other things that I don't think, and Mike can certainly jump in here if he'd like, that they probably want to be made public at this point or anything like that. But there are certainly plans that are in the works of various types to try to solve some of those problems, some of which will be resolved by extending the circulation, as you've talked about in your plans. Any other questions, while you got me here this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now's probably as good a time as any to jump in on the Greensprings intersection interchange area. We've been in, the city has been in about a two-year process of studying that intersection and the interchange. We actually will be bringing that to council your second work meeting in February. work meeting in February. Just last week, we had our final review with UDOT on that, so we have about five, six options that are available for that, so that will be presented to council, like I say, the second meeting in February.
Is that still the worst intersection in the state?
It is. Well, in the county. In the county, it's the worst. The, the most travel has the most traffic at any intersection in Washington County.
Is UDOT still considering that Main Street could be an interstate interchange?
Yes, that's part of our options.
That's one of the options that we presented.
Yeah, we definitely, looking at our, looking at our travel forecast, we're, we're looking out at 2040 is what we've, the horizon that we looked at on this, and we most definitely have to have another interchange off I-15, whether it be, we're looking at two possible options, either Main Street or 300 East, but that's.
We've already started at least approaching that subject.
I know we've got 300 East that has a school.
A school, that's, that's the biggest problem we have with 300 East.
It also doesn't extend to the north. I think Main Street has both a southerly and a northerly.
The reason we looked at 300 East is, is right now, the majority of our traffic coming off the Green Springs interchange is going out to the Washington Fields area. And if we put an interchange at 30, so it's a direct route out to the Fields, as well as 300 East is a very wide road right now, there's just two-block area that's.
South of Telegraph.
Well, even north of Telegraph. It's, I think it's an 82 and a half foot right away there, other than the two-block section from Telegraph up to the cemetery.
But if a lot of that's going into our fields, isn't the underpass going to alleviate a lot of that with the Mall Drive Bridge and whatnot? You would think that that's where most of that traffic would go.
Part of our study, we looked at every single proposed improvement in the area, which looked at Mall Drive Bridge, it looked at Mall Drive Underpass, it looked at quite a few different options that we'll present to you and show you how far out, and that's the way it took almost two years to get through it, is it just became a monster, kept growing, 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 and it never will be a smooth flowing intersection.
What's the projected timeframe on northern corridor? Have you heard any estimates?
No, the northern corridor itself was probably quite a ways out, but Washington.
Quite a ways, five years, 10 years?
It's not, and it's still, it's really not northern corridor, it is Washington Parkway, that's the, the name that's been given to it. And this section that we're looking at on this flat here as well, we'll tie the Exit 13, that will, a lot of it be development-driven. With the development that we've got coming, I don't see that it's, it's five to the 10-year range. It might not be full build, but when we adopted the cross-section for this road, we actually did it in phases, so we'll start out.
So this particular project isn't going to negatively impact?
No.
That proposed corridor?
No.
I know that the MPO is very concerned with that corridor, or something that feels very important to the county.
And that's, that's kind of one of the differences we have with the MPO, they are looking at it as a highway, and we have never looked at it as a highway, Washington Parkway. We've always looked at it as what Washington Parkway is from Telegraph up to, to Exit 13. That's what we've envisioned Washington Parkway as being all the way through with a landscaped, center median, landscaped shoulders, a trail system.
Well, I think that's one of the important things of our MPO, though, that we're all looking at things the same path, that's why we exist.
Correct.
And so that's probably something that we probably.
Our cross-section that we have for Washington Parkway was given to the MPO, it was given to the engineering firm that's been working through it.
As long as we're all communicating.
Yeah, I think it's really fallen on one person in the MPO that's seen a bigger picture as a highway system, like the southern corridor, which I don't think anybody's.
Well, I remember when the southern corridor first started talking about, everybody said it'll never happen, and cut ribbons today, so, you know, things happen when you plan them.
And southern, the southern corridor, southern Parkway's always been envisioned as a highway system, as a divided highway. Anyway, so the Green Springs interchange is definitely looked at, and we spend a lot of time looking at the traffic, and you'll, you'll see that next month.
Now this, just to be clear, Mike, I thought I saw hash lines above this, that, that 106-foot public street.
That absolute, the dotted lines that were shown above this mean absolutely nothing to me, it's not on any of our master plans as of yet, so right now.
So this 106-foot public street, that's Washington Parkway?
That's Washington Parkway. That would be the extension from our Washington Parkway on through. Now, it makes sense to build if it's going to be a highway system to get one that's going to actually go maybe further to the north.
Did you say you planned for 2040?
2040.
I'll be 82.
So we won't let you.
I'm still playing golf then, too, Mayor, so.
You won't be able to drive.
Half of you, I mean, it's really, half of you won't be here.
Hi, I'm Larry Westover, and I live in North Bridges Estates. I, I have many concerns about this. It's interesting to see how Washington is growing as a city, how much development's going on, it's pretty incredible. And I think in some ways that defeats the, for the homeowners, the value of their homes, because there's just so many new things going on, and there's such an incredible inventory of, of properties that are available. I know in my street, there are four houses, there are three empty lots. Of those four houses, two of them have been for sale for three years, and there used to be three, but we purchased that house, so we kind of changed the, the composition there a little bit. But I'm also concerned about the, the entrance there, bringing traffic in. If you have, what is it, 325 homes, something like that, it's going to bring some traffic in there, and it is, it is kind of a snarl there. I don't see another exit really solving that problem there, there's just so much that's going on right there that people are getting off for either In-N-Out or Costco, you know, there are several other good choices there. But the reason I'm standing up right now is I'm, I think this discussion about, you know, when, when will streets go in, you know, this, this development are really good to look at in its entirety, and I hope that rather, I don't know what your plan is, if you plan on voting on this little pocket, or I, I would recommend that you look at this whole project and kind of see the scope of it and how it will benefit or impact the neighborhood, and that you'll consider it from a broad perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Anybody else?
As we were planning this project, we anticipated that traffic would be an issue, and that's why we commissioned and had a full-blown traffic study done initially, where normally it's not done until preliminary plat. Traffic studies doesn't, are based on a lot of things, but the Reader's Digest version is, is that they're given a grade, just like when you're at school, A, B, C, D, you have an E and an F. Of course, F being a scenario that doesn't work, anything below a D works. Our traffic study evaluated our proposal along with the existing road system, didn't necessarily count on future roadways, it said this is the existing road system. It did study and do traffic counts at Green Springs and I-15 interchange, and did identify in the next few years you've got a problem. It also identified that the amount of traffic we generated adding to of our traffic is insignificant, and you're going to have a problem with or without us. So even though we do add cars to it, we, we're not the cause of that problem. All our other movements are A, B with one C, and that's a complete build-out. Also remember that there's no designation in the traffic study between second homes and primary homes, it's all based on that the homes are fully occupied. So our study, we don't exceed C, we only have C in one, and we're A and B in every other movement with, based on full residential occupation, and really, we're probably banned within Walker Homes indicates that their current projects are about 80% second homes. But the, the traffic will be significantly less in our traffic study, but it's kind of important, because even if they were completely full, we, the roads are adequate to handle our demands.
So your study assumes that they're fully occupied based on the proposed build-out?
Yeah, based on 325, 360 homes that were proposed, that's included, these 160 are included in the 100, 320. I, I won't get into the overall project unless you want me to, but at whatever point you want to, we'll, we'll look at that overall, how it fits. But again, it's, it's a unique area. Oh, also, I wanted to address the southern Parkway, and I know there is a debate between the MPO and Washington City on whether or the corridor went. But we did, we did planning and accommodated either decision. If northern Parkway is going to be a highway to the north, then Washington Parkway can, can go connect to it and become a major intersection.
We'd go either way.
I, yeah, we haven't, we haven't resolved that issue.
I just don't want an issue like the southern corridor, where they build a golf course in the middle of the right-of-way, and then all of a sudden said, uh-oh, we got a problem now, Houston.
We went to length and did a proposal, whether northern corridor or the dead, with the MPO on, says, yeah, that's a reasonable solution, and having Washington Parkway come up and tie into it as we're proposing. It is, it's just an option, we, we don't control that, but we didn't want to shut the door any of those options.
Rich Wing at North Bridges Estates, I didn't hear the question answered. Procedurally, will you vote individually or on all three separately, or will it be banded together to vote?
I think it's individually, it's, they're each, they're three different items, so they'll be individually voted on.
Okay, will public hearing be open for each one?
Each one, yes, yeah.
I'm Karen Westover, I also live in North Bridges Estates, and I think what they've been trying to get at as far as voting on this is, what they did in the planning commission meeting was to look at all three of them before they voted on any one of them, so that you could see the whole picture before you voted on one, rather than just look at each of them separately and then voting. And I think that would be advisable. Secondly, I know they keep talking about this traffic study, but I don't know exactly when they did the traffic study, but if they did it in July, half the people are gone anyway, so it doesn't have as much merit as if they did it, you know, in October or something, when the people are here that are here half of the year, that's the time they're here. And so six months of the year, we have to deal with that. Also, if they did it in the summer, when people aren't driving kids to school and things like that, it is not as meaningful. So it may be that they did it at a good time, but it may be that they did it in the middle of summer, in which case it, to me, it's meaningless. Also, as far as studies go, I think if you're paying somebody to do a study for you, a lot of times you tend to get the results that you want to get. I know it didn't used to be that way, but I, I've gotten very skeptical in recent years that you can have anybody prove anything you want to, and somebody else could prove exactly the opposite. So I don't know about you, but some of those things are kind of meaningless to me these days. So anyway, if you, I would appreciate if you take those things into consideration.
I'll just maybe address the, the issue with, with the three projects. What, what we see on our packets is we get the minutes from the planning commission. Now, I happen to be at the planning commission meeting, so I know very well, but I know from, from past experience by fellow council members, we get the minutes from that meeting, and, and so we understand that this, these are all three together. I don't know that we're, I don't think we're going to take the same approach, I mean, that's up to you, Mayor, but I, I don't think we need to take the same approach they did in the planning commission, which was review them all, public hearing them all, and then come back and vote separately. I, I think we've seen it and understand enough that we can follow the agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing that's kind of nice, is with the planning commission, is they fleshed those things out for us a little bit, so they get to see it initially, and we get second look at it, and so it does help us, in fact, that by then, a lot of those issues have come out that we're able to look at, and then to go look at the site and to hear the comments that came out of the, of the planning commission meeting, and look at those issues and say, are they legitimate issues, are they not, can they be addressed, can they not, those types of things.
I'm William Beasley, I live in North Bridge. I have here the executive summary, William Beasley, the executive summary from the traffic study. It was performed from 7:00 to 9:00 AM and from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on Wednesday, November 27.
Thank you.
I do have a copy of the executive summary of the traffic study, if you'd like your copy of it.
Yes, please.
I'm kind of hearing there may be some concern about the times, the times are dictated by the ITI, International Traffic Institute of when, they, they count peak flows, and that's why they count morning and afternoon flows, that's when people are going and coming from work, that's, they're dictated to count traffics at those times. And the, the study was done by PEC, Kelly Harris, which is a certified traffic engineer located in the Salt Lake area, knows nothing or anything about the local politics.
Mike, have you, have we worked with this PEC before? Are you familiar with, because we usually don't see the, the traffic studies, these usually come at after, after we've already seen it.
Yes, we have worked with them.
And do you, do you see anybody's bias in any way?
No, I think it's, it's a very good study that we received, but.
So November would have at least been the prime time when everybody was home, as far as those that have it as a second residence or a retirement. Trying to catch the peak hours.
Like Mr. Rain said, that, that's mainly what we really look at is our peak hour trips, that's when we, you know, everybody's going to work or coming from work, and that's historically at our intersections, that's when we have our traffic backups, and that's what we need to look at, is the AM, PM peaks. And with this study, it shows that our AM peaks 214 trips, AM and 276 trips PM.
So it basically says that from Green Springs to Concord is a grade?
It'll go from a level service B to a C.
And then Green Springs to Fairway, B to a C.
Green Springs Freeway Drive would be a C to a C, and then.
And North Green Springs to Buena Vista Boulevard are?
A D to an E. And to give you an example, an A rating is basically a brand-new intersection with no traffic.
Put that in perspective with some of the other roads that we see around town. Can you, I know that's hard to do, but let's say Washington Fields Road, that's, that's a big arterial road.
Yeah, but that would be, we, we have to pick an intersection, so.
Summit to River Road intersection.
I have no idea.
What if we go 2000 South?
I would say Summit would probably be E, a D to an E.
Well, what is our, what is our 300 East and, and industrial road intersection?
300 East Industrial would probably be a C, other than your left-hand turning movements going north, or your turning movements out of Park, left-hand movements going south.
When you see, when you see this range, you're saying acceptable?
This is acceptable, yes.
On your range then?
Anything.
By red flag or better than average?
Anything that's a C is actually a, is a very acceptable working intersection.
So it's not like Mike Sun comes home with a C, it's not acceptable?
No, yeah, it's, it's nothing like grading in the, in your schooling, so, because we actually, it's, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, so we have the E in there that you don't have in school, but a D is getting in the, in the unacceptable range. When you're hitting a D, then you want to start looking at what are we going to do to do improvements on it. Right now, the Green Springs Telegraph intersection, there's legs in there that are at Ds, there are some legs that are at an F right now.
On where again?
Green Springs and Telegraph, the left-hand turning movements.
So that, that's why it's all, when it talks about north Green Springs to west Buena Vista and the Red Hills Parkway, that's why we're at a D would go to an E within the next few years.
Yeah, and then, and like I say, there are, there are things planned on the Red Hills Parkway, Buena Vista, that that's a UDOT project that's coming, and I believe that's probably going to come within the next year.
So we'll be, we've talked about that intersection more than once in the past couple of years that I've been here.
Correct. And that's where they, UDOT come in and proposed the through turns at that intersection. And that is on their uh, the STIP list for, I believe, next year, funded for next year.
Okay.
So that will address the, the north side of I fifteen and we are re-looking at the south side of I fifteen with our study.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else?
Mayor, I will, seeing nobody come up, I will motion that we close the public hearing for item eight A.
I'll second that.
So motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Nice and high.
Truman eye.
Staley eye.
Signaler eye.
Turk eye.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move down to B, consideration to approve an ordinance adopting the zone change request. Z dash thirteen dash fifteen to change present zone from OS to PUD.
Drew, if I may, a lot of it, we're talking about some of these things that have changed quite a bit over the years. And I'm not talking about this one, but I'm looking at Stuki Farm and whatnot. If we approve this for the PUDs that exist today, and let's say it doesn't happen, the, what's the, what's the guarantee for the future that, that they will have from this vote tonight? Will it be that they'll always be able to have that many units or would the PUD have to come back for them?
Oh, PUDs have a time limit, eighteen months. If they do not pull a building permit after the zoning has been approved, it reverts back to the original.
Back to the open space?
Yep.
Okay.
You're talking about building permit to, to move dirt on the project?
No, to build.
To have an occupied dwelling?
Yeah, now if they're pulling permits and building the subdivision out, we kind of, you know, work with, like I say, if it just goes stagnant and they don't do anything, we, we will at that point, you know, if they've done nothing on the project. So like I say, as long as they're pursuing moving dirt, have a preliminary plat in or even toward a final, don't get too hung up at that point because they are moving forward, so. But then if it stops significantly for eight months or, you know, then we'd say your time limit's gone.
Kind of like the one we had down by Walmart that did exactly that, put some of the infrastructure and then went silent.
Or even this one we have up on Fifth or Fourth North that we just redid. Uh, that one actually went defunct twice over the years, so.
If there's no further discussion, I'll motion that we approve an ordinance adopting zone change request. Z dash thirteen dash fifteen to change present zone from open space to PUD based on findings subject to conditions.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second?
Nice and high.
Truman eye.
Staley eye.
Signaler eye.
Turk eye.
Okay, that one passes. Thank you. Item C, public hearing for consideration to approve a zone change application. Z dash thirteen dash sixteen requesting to change present zone from open space to R dash one dash fifteen. Single-family minimum fifteen thousand square lots zone approximately eighteen hundred north, north of North Bridge and twelve hundred west, north of, north end of Concord Parkway, Brandon and Holyfield. I'll see.
Just for reference, it's that long skinny piece right there. It's kind of a off-orange color according to that TV. Um, so with that, the applicant's requesting a zone change for approximately five point nine four four acres. Um, it basically starts at the north end of, of the Concord Parkway out of the Green Springs development. Um, they are requesting uh the zone change from the current open space to an single-family residential fifteen thousand square foot or the R one fifteen zoning designation. General plan land use uh map defines this as a low-density residential zone, which allows for zoning categories of the R one eight, R one ten, R one twelve. And as noted, this is R one fifteen. You can always go above, but not below. Uh, the densities in, in that general plan um designation are three to four point five dwellings per acre. Uh, the surrounding general plan land use designation are low-density residential to the northwest, south, and east. Now, the surrounding zoning designations are open space to the west, north, and east, and planned unit development, uh, PUD to the south, which North Bridge is a, a PUD. Um, most of Green Springs falls under PUD, just for your information. Uh, staffs reviewed the proposal. Um, it falls well within the general plan land use designation. Therefore, finds no problem for recommended approval. Uh, the planning commission reviewed the request at their December fourth meeting. They unanimously recommended approval of the zone change. Request of Z dash thirteen dash sixteen uh from open space to single-family residential fifteen thousand square foot uh to the city council and based on the findings that you see in your report. And you also have the, the minutes from the meeting attached to your report as well. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that the council might have on.
Just to be clear, Drew, the hashed area is not included with this discussion tonight?
It cannot be because it's in the county.
Because it hasn't been annexed.
Right, now.
It looks like their anticipation is that it would all become.
In this particular portion, most of this R one fifteen will be within that annexation. Now, the council at the time, just to give you a little, I guess, information how, what would happen at that point if you pass this tonight at the annexation time, they could request that the zoning for this particular area be R one fifteen and you at that point um can just assign it zoning because it borders and it is adjacent to existing zoning that they would ask for if this passes. Just that's kind of how things can work in an annexation, so they don't have to commit into a zone change. It can be assigned by the city council at the time that it comes in. So that's why I wanted to, we, you know, felt it might be important to throw the hashed area on as the annexation comes back before you hear uh within the next weeks or whatever the time is it'll take to get to a public hearing for that and uh council aside.
Sorry. It's refreshing to see the request for a zoning other than the lowest density or the highest density, excuse me. You know, even on this council, we've had a little bit of a battle on some issues where they, everybody seems to want the, the maximum density they can get. We're always hoping that maybe they'll ratchetered up a little bit and add a little space, so it's nice to have that.
Well, and I think that was their point in the planning commission, I think the minutes, hopefully they reflected that, that they didn't want to take too much away from the, the North Bridge Estates. Um, you know, the gated part of it up in there with a little bit bigger lots. Now, is it as big as the lots all throughout the North Bridge Estates? We'll know. Um, but at least it's a little bit more toward that. And most of these lots will probably end up being um bigger, you know, than just fifteen thousand square foot. In fact, most of them will probably, you know, they're saying in their preliminary design that they'll be fairly close to those in the North Bridge Estates lot size. So if there's any other questions you want from me or?
You said the R one fifteen is three to four per acre. Is that what?
No, that's, that's the three to four and a half. The R one fifteen, if, let me just peek in my general plan real quick because I don't have those all memorized. I know, bad me.
I thought you did.
Roughly, the R one fifteen is two point five dwelling units per acre as found in the general plan, so.
I was just roughly calculating about how many lots we might see here.
Yeah, and it's, like I say, it's always hard because you've got to calculate for roads and bins and et cetera, so.
Thanks, Drew. Public hearing number two.
First, let me say we'd really liked to brought a PUD in for this entire project so we could be looking at the project. Unfortunately, in the time since North Bridge was adopted as a PUD and now there was, by prior planner, the city, they changed your PUD ordinance. And it was done uh, you know, with good intentions, looking at attached units, thinking that's what a PUD was. But it significantly penalizes individual lots, and the bigger the lots, the bigger the penalty. So when you try to do a large lot PUD, you can't meet the requirements because of the quirk in the ordinance. So that, that, it may be in your mind, why, why isn't it PD? We desperately would love to have a PD because we could, we wouldn't get into the problems we're having of trying to show, can't show the plan, but trying to show the plan.
And Jim, with the, the project, the scope, you really could have considered a PCD. Did you, did that come across or was there a reason?
Well, it's borderline for a PCD. It's not quite there for the guidelines for a PCD. So yeah, I encourage you to look at your PUD and take away that, that one provision that penalizes large lots. Because right now, the, on the R one fifteen zone area, including what's in the annexation, we're proposing thirty-one lots for a density of one point two units per acre. Uh, they're identical in layout to.
Thirty-one in the entire yellow space?
Thirty-one in the entire yellow space. Uh, one point two units per acre, uh, the lots are equal to or greater than the lots in North Bridge Estates. Our largest lot is, is just under sixty thousand square feet. That's forty-three, five sixties an acre, reference. They, they're single-loaded because of the hillside, climbing up the hillside. Uh, we want all of those to be view lots where they step down, so there's not lots pushing into the hillside, just like North Bridge Estates. So it, it's, it couldn't be more compatible with North Bridge Estates. I did North Bridge Estates. It was based on a project uh in Newport Beach, California, to step down the ocean, to have that stepped and not pushing in the back of the hills. And so we use that exact same concept.
Compatibility, you mean from a lot size?
Lot size, layout, road size, configuration, it's identical. The only real difference is that this is convex because that's the way the hill does. And we follow around the hill. In the North Bridge Estates, it's concave because that's the way the hill falls, so. It's, it's really single-loaded roads and big, large lots in the twenty to sixty thousand square foot range. We really are proposing three project, three, now four, with the modifications we made of four home types on this whole hundred and twenty-two acres. I'll, I'll get into all those details on the next zone change because that's where I think most of the concerns lie. And that's where most of our changes were made. But if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
It's a straight zone. There won't be common areas.
There is significant amount of common area on those single-loaded roads, but the zonings are one fifty. When you see the preliminary plat, you'll, you'll be able to see what we're doing. Very similar, North Bridge, we, the uphill lots, there's a landscape feature behind those lots. We'll have that. And there's a huge landscape corridor that runs along Concord Drive, even much larger than the one that's in uh North Bridge Estates. Yeah, Concord Drive is a sixty-foot residential collector road. It's always designed to handle, provide access and handle traffic. Uh, on a sixty-foot collect, residential collector, you could front lots on it. We're choosing not to and putting a larger open space corridor in there and a trail system that services the park and gets people from the park uh in adjoining subdivisions up to Desert Torres Habitat, so you can enjoy that open space.
So this is probably a five to nine-year plan?
Uh, our, yeah, exactly. Uh, our, our contract with SITLA is a five-year with two two-year options based on market demand. Our contract with Henry Walker Homes reflects that. And Henry Walker Homes is the builder on all of it, all three hundred and twenty-six lots. The Villas, the State Lots, and the Standard Lots. Any questions? Thank you.
Again, this public hearing, anybody want to come up?
Larry Westover from North Bridge. Uh, one of the concerns that I had, I mean, I can see where this plan maybe is going to be less intrusive than other types of architecture that might go in there. But is there any assurances that are available that they maintain the topography of the land, the elevations? Or, or will some of these areas get filled? I know uh in our neighborhood, a lot of lots have uh kind of gone up a little bit in the, not, in, in their elevation. By backfilling, you know, they, they move a road and it's like, hey, we can need some extra dirt over here. You can dump it here and all of a sudden, where it's kind of hollowed out in there, um, it's kind of a natural wash there. That uh, is that going to?
That's a really, that's a really good question. So here's how, how it works. So right now, we're at a public hearing for just a zone change. And Mr. Raines is, is speaking about maybe some preliminary drawings that, that they've done. But those drawings still have to come through the process with us. So there will be plans presented through the planning commission, recommended to the council, public hearings with those, and then staff along with us two bodies, we will look at those and public input will be welcome. So we can't, we haven't seen the, and we really don't get too far ahead of that until it comes. But I think those are great questions and if I'm a neighbor there, I'm probably watching this whole process. And, and, and preliminary plat with those, the first approval is really the key one to be involved with.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hopefully the, the lots will be not so, so close in there. I know that, you know, when you see all these garage doors, that's really, that's really a view from the street is uh, is what you're going to see there. That's going to be the aesthetics.
See, and the difference is, is on the PUD, it's, it's a different type of approval. So they have the zone change to do this custom project. But on the zone changes, they still have to come back through the process, so.
Thank you.
If, you know, they have.
Sorry, you'll hear, hear a little more from me. Rich Wing at North Bridge Estates. Just on that point.
Yeah.
You play pickleball lately up there at the park? If you just look right there, already that lot is built up way over above the topography already. So we, we don't, we're not talking about circumstantial evidence. We're talking about evidence that you guys have already approved where the topography is supposed to be maintained. Go play pickleball there. Look right out there. The lot is up. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No other comments, Mayor. I'll make the motion. We close the public hearing.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Nice and high.
Truman eye.
Staley eye.
Signaler eye.
Turk eye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item D, consideration to approve an ordinance adopting a zone change request. Z dash thirteen dash sixteen to change present zone from OS to PUD.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve zone change, uh, Z dash thirteen dash sixteen uh to change our current zone from open space to.
Should be the R one fifteen.
Uh, yeah, R one fifteen, correct. I was going to say, I knew it wasn't PUD, so.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second?
Nice and high.
Truman eye.
Staley eye.
Signaler eye.
Turk eye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Go with item E, public hearing for consideration to approve a zone change application. Z dash thirteen dash seventeen requesting to change the present zone from open space to R dash one eight. Single-family minimum eight thousand square foot lot zone located approximately eighteen hundred north, North Bridge Estates and twelve hundred west, north end of Concord Parkway.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think this is the one that most people are here for, um, and we'll get into that and reason why. The applicant is requesting a zone change of approximately fifty-eight point nine one three acres. Um, this also starts at the beginning, um, or at the end of the current Concord Parkway heading north, but this is on the east side of that extension uh where the area, you can see with my pen in the middle of it. Um, the current zoning is open space. The applicant is wishing to propose a single-family residential eight thousand square foot minimum or the R one eight zoning designation. Uh, the general plan land use designation at this particular location is low-density residential as with the two previous ones. Uh, again, carries the three to four point five dwelling unit per acre. Also, those zoning districts currently in that particular designation do allow for an R one twelve or an R one ten or the R one eight, which is what they're proposing. Now, the surrounding general plan land use designations again are low-density residential to the east, west, and south. Um, the surrounding zoning designation, uh, zoning, that was the general plan land use designations. The zoning surrounding this project are open space to the west and north, single-family residential, ten thousand square foot minimum, which is the um Matt Low Project. Washington Vista's there to the east. And um, and then PUD to the south, which of course is the North Bridge Phase Three, I think, particular project at this, this area. Staff from the beginning kind of did have a concern about the R one eight with the surrounding. Um, but I also understand with the topography and some of the designs, which again, the council's not able to see is, they will probably not be able to max out at that uh after. not able to see is they will probably not be able to max out at that after seeing that and some of the layout kind of took away a little bit of my, my concerns. And again, because it does fall within the general plan amendment. I mean, the general plan land use designation allowing for the R18 currently, the staff recommended that approval to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed the request at their December 4th meeting, had extensive public hearing on it with the surrounding neighbors and homeowners with great concern about the density, the traffic is, and I said, see your attachment, it's there, it's probably the one that was the thickest in the minutes. With that, the Planning Commission by a vote of three to two, recommended denial of Z-13-17 for the zone change request from the open space to the R18. Their findings in their motion was that the Planning Commission stated the reason for denial, that the R18 zoning designation does not really, they don't feel it conforms to surrounding zoning in that area that's been developed. But with that, just for your information purposes, staff's findings for that recommendation of approval were the following three, that it does conform again with the general plan and all the other findings that you see in your report. But just so the council knows the reason this is here before you, again, the recommendation is a recommendation from the Planning Commission. You still can either uphold that recommendation or overturn that recommendation as the code states. That's why it still comes before the planning, I mean, the city council for the final say on that through the public hearing process. I will be more than glad to answer any questions that the council may have for me on this particular item. Again, but I think you've had a chance to read through the minutes and somewhat familiar with how our meeting went that night on the 4th and-
Just for the, the, the project that's being developed right now to the east, so between Greenspring Parkway and that, what is the zoning there? Is it, it's a straight zone?
It's straight zoned 10,000 square foot minimum lots.
R110.
It's R110.
We twisted our arm a little bit on that, didn't we?
You know, I wasn't here when that zoning went into effect. I think that was before my time, it's been that long. Now, you may talk about the subdivision itself. I think the plat you might have, it changed a little bit and, because we just had issues with these different things.
Remember, I did, I did, I was here when the plat came through, so.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion, I think, especially as the road in this area.
Guess that might not be the best way to- We just, this looks a little better, I agree.
Yeah, so, but it is, it's straight zoning, it's R110. And you may be familiar over in the, you know, the, the most north of the Silverstone, we had to come back, take it out of PUD and put it into an R110. People, some, for some reason, built into the open space in the backyard. So we had to fix, fix that recently, not recently, it's been a while. So it's, there's a lot of R110 up on that north end of all the development in Greensprings area, so.
I got a question for the applicant.
That's not the last.
Well, I felt, having read through the minutes again, having been to that meeting, I felt like the concerns that carried the most merit were the concerns of feathering or gradually changing the lot sizes from a zoning perspective. If you had a chance to do this over again and come with this one, would you again ask for blanket R18? Or would you have asked for varying zones across this piece of property?
This is what we're here tonight to ask. We've modified, we've met, like I said, four different times. We've had numerous meetings with the owners. We've heard their concerns about feathering densities. So what I have here tonight and what I'm going to ask for tonight, if it can be done, is that our current request be modified from a straight R18 zone to a tiered zone, starting with R112 adjacent to Greenspring. This darker stuff next to, to an R110, then balance be R18. And if, if we can do that tonight, great. If we can't, I have two zone change applications prepared and I would ask that we zone R18 so we can move forward. These will be submitted tonight and guaranteed.
That sounds like a question for our council and our department head. Sorry, Jim, just to restate, R112, R110, and then R18, is that, that's how it steps?
That's how it steps, yes.
How will then be handed under application from them?
Absolutely, yes. And like I said, the reason we did that is to, we've heard the residents' concerns. We've relayed on our project several times, deleted plots and do that. And if you want, I can jump into that presentation if you want or if you have more questions.
I've heard of it, you know, I do see.
There again, I think part of the problem we had, we started about a little bit before six and got done a little bit after nine at Planning Commission.
Great comments, by the way. There were probably twice as many people and every, it was very well-
Yeah, and let me extend my thanks and gratitude for the homeowners association, president and other members in the Northbridge area to organize the neighborhood meetings and with us talking. I apologize, we didn't get out to all the neighborhoods, but you know, we did make an effort to try and, you know, just short of 30 people last Monday was, was good comments. I don't want to speak for them, I'm sure they'll be able to speak. But you can see that our proposal has a buffer, R112, then R110, and it's that line you see and you can't read that, that's 700 feet there. So it's not, it's not a small buffer zone, we're trying to make it significant.
Does this change the number of lots?
From our original proposal, yes. And if you, I think-
Although we're not supposed to ask about lots.
Well, it's a problem.
But it did come up in the last, and you've offered that information, so.
And one thing we are willing to do and we will commit to do tonight, that if we can get the zones as proposed, we will also submit a development agreement between us and the city that guarantees everything I say tonight. So when we submit our preliminary plat, and we submitted with a development agreement that assures you that anything we represented to homeowners in our meetings and that we represented to Planning Commission, you and I will be under contract between us and the city to give you the assurances that are involved. And that development agreement will run the plat. Let me, let me go about what we're proposing. I can't show you plat, I wish I could, but the homeowners have seen it, they all probably got a copy in their pocket, so hopefully they're a little more informed. As you can see, we're proposing 326 lots on 122 acres for a density of 2.7. That includes the villas, it's 116 units on 28 acres or four units per acre. You can see our density in the state lots are 1.2. Our density in the lots that we're talking about in this zone change is 2.6. You can see the vast majority of those are, only 25 of them, our smallest lots 8,000 square feet. Let me tell you, this is a little bit unique because we have a builder and we have a plan and we have a specific project. We're not trying to design universal lots that the builder then makes the home fit the lot. We have the home that we're trying to make the lot fit the home. That's a fairly fundamental difference than, than a typical subdivision. So we know the home footprint and the home footprint fits a lot roughly 80 by 110. Now, we have a curvilinear design that orients all lots towards the views. Now, the way you get the maximum density is a grid. Our layout, as you can see from, we showed the main road configuration, so you, show you traffic patterns, that's, it's very curvilinear and not in a grid scenario. So that's why we're only achieving 2.6 units per acre. As you look down at the average lot comparison for all sizes, if you include the state lots, and I wanted to show you both, our average lot size with the 210 single-family lots were 12,000 square feet. Now, I felt like because our estate lots are a little bit different animal, I wanted to take that out. So for the 179 lots that we will be proposing on the R18, R110 and R112, the average lot size in there is 10,300 square feet. Now that, there again, our minimum lot size is 88, our largest lot is over 16,000 square feet. Our lots that border Northbridge Estates and R112 zone, the back on right to those homes are all equal to its size, they're ranging 13, 12, 13 up to 16,000 square feet. With an addition, we've planned a 30-foot trail, open space area directly behind the Northbridge lots. So you figure those lots are 100-
Can you point that out on the map?
That's, that's right here. Now, the shaded area you see right here, that's the extension of the park. This will all be open space apart. That's part of the extension, expansion of the park. For this area here, these lots are all, this road right next to them are all equal to in this. If you add the 30-foot trail that runs right here, we'll have a 10-foot bike pave, asphalt certified bike trail access to park. That would add another 3,000 to 5,000 square foot. 13 to 16,000 square foot lots in area. So those, those lots are large, equal to or greater than, than the lots we're backing on. We're really trying to be good neighbors. Then the lots up to Wilshire are over 10, and then we go up to that lot breakdown. See our proposed lot size? That 25 of them are 88 to 9, 64 of them are 9 to 10, and so on and so forth, you read those. But there again, our average lot size, our density is even low-density for an R110 zone. And we'll commit to that and we'll do that. And our request tonight is to zone as we proposed, as we've prepared the legal descriptions and exhibits here, R112, R110 and R18. We don't want R18 for the balance of it, and we're hoping you can improve that tonight. If not, we'd ask that you approve our zone change and these will be submitted in their entirety tonight to go back and rezone that. But our understanding with you and our legal counsel, we feel like we're within our right to modify our request to, to that tonight and hopefully you consider approving it that way.
Our legal counsel just stepped out, I'm sure he'll be back. I noticed, I noticed you requested to change it to R110 at the Planning Commission and he stated that that wouldn't be possible because-
And we've had further discussions, hopefully we're okay, but I won't speak for you.
Okay.
But that, that's basically what we're proposing and how we get there is we'll do it however you tell us to do it, but that's, that's our commitment.
You know, we've had one somewhat similar to this where we had a developer come in asking for R18, basically giving us a commitment to do something bigger and different, which he held up to, which was very nice for us. Basically, because of topography on a couple of issues, they had to go with a couple of smaller lots within it. And so it certainly is nice to deal with developers who give you work and keep the work.
And like I said, we're, I walked away from 30 years of building a business to, to work with Mr. Brennan on his projects and vast majority of his 3,000 acres are going to fall within Washington City. I would be an idiot to come up here and represent something to you and not fulfill it because you would not take me seriously over the next 10 years. Very important that we build a level of trust. And we've worked hard to work with the neighbors and, and present them with information. I know we probably don't have, we didn't convince all of them and I respect that. I have tremendous respect for the people who came and made comments. We, we have made significant changes and have cut our densities down and have feathered it and modified our plan. But there again, remember, this is even a little different than the Maltz project that you referred to earlier. We have a builder and we have, we're under contract. We've signed a contract with Henry Walker Homes, who is one of the best capitalized premium builders in the state of Utah, to, to build the escapes at Greensprings. So it, it's, it's a very, it is truly a master plan community that we know what the homes are going to be, we know what the architecture is going to be and we know what we're going to do. And so our certainty to extend that into a development agreement with our preliminary plat, we'll get every assurance we possibly legally can give to you that we're going to do what we say we're going to do.
I've always thought, Jim, that farther north you go, the better the view gets. I'm a little surprised tonight to see the high density on the north end. Just because of the way it flattens out?
You're absolutely right, and our lot pricing is not based on square footage. Our premium lots are no flaws and they're not necessarily square footage. Our agreement with Henry Walker Homes has four or five tiers? Four tiers of lot pricing and the highest-priced lots, but not the largest square foot of lots, are those up above the open space with the views. Right? The, the value of this property is the views in the backing on it, open space. The square footage of lots, I know the residents struggle with that concept, but that isn't what's determining values in this project. Our highest-priced lots in that area are in the R18, up in that upper view area. And that, our agreement reflects that. We have four-tiered pricing in our agreement with Henry Walker and those are the most expensive ones, even though they're not the biggest in square footage. Probably, we could have Ben Willetts come up from Henry Walker if you'd like and he can maybe answer any questions about what they're proposing homes and that. If you want to get into that, maybe that's appropriate now or-
Sure. I'd like to have him do a bit, the council started to mention, they're out, trying to make some decisions.
We can take some other public comments.
But like I'm saying, however he decides to do, we're prepared. We're formally making the request to do that tonight. If that can't be done, here are the two applications for the R112 and R110. And they'll be turned in. I would have turned them in before if they wanted, I'm not sure whether-
So are you, are you saying that if, you're saying that assuming that this R18 piece, the beige, is approved, then you would apply for R110 and R112 on these other parcels?
Yeah, our, our first desire is to have, be able to honor our request tonight is zone R112, R110 and R18 tonight. If there's a legal technicality that can't allow that, then we would ask for to approve the R18, but prior to that, I will submit it with the checks for those two zones. I'm just trying to get over legal technicality. Our desire is to have it zoned R112. R112 and R110. So they're here ready and they'll be turned in as soon as the attorney tells us how we have, how we have to do it. Thank you. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Jim.
I'm William Beasley, I live in Northbridge. The proposed R18, I mean, this is a great feathering plan, but still, most of this is R18. That's 8,000 square foot lots. Northbridge immediately to the south is the smallest lot in Northbridge is almost 12,000 feet. I don't, I didn't calculate the average. The proposed R18, the stuff that's still up there, it can go up to 4.5 DU per acre. This is, this is the zoning we're looking at. Proposal is something different, you said. Northbridge currently has 1.6 homes per acre. That's not low-density, that's very low-density. The general plan, section 6.4.1 calls for more than one zoning category between adjacent areas. At 1.5 per acre, Northbridge lots are at the very bottom, it's a very low density. The proposal at 4.5 is at the very high end of low-density. The amendment, there's an amendment to the general plan being considered later tonight to remove R18 from the low-density, print in medium-density. So if that amendment were to pass, beige area that's not being zoned would be against Northbridge low-density designation. And a two-step, and a two-step change from Northbridge, 700 feet away. I hope you follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission and deny this request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity. My name is John Cherry. I live in Northbridge subdivision. There's actually two areas there. If I can go ahead and use this.
Sure.
I live, let me use this one up. I live right there. All of those lots that face that brown area are in excess of 15,000 square feet. The smallest one is 15.8. Why do I know that? When I was acquiring, okay, and I've already built up there, when I was looking at purchasing a site, obviously I looked at all those sites. To have it feather in, in the other ones on the other side are at least 13,000, even 14,000. The, the amendment, okay, that Beasley indicated, okay, moving this thing forward in terms of 10,000 square feet, I don't think, okay, we should be approving this until, okay, that amendment, okay, is acted upon. Second of all, okay, the 8,000 square feet, I don't know of any site up there and I've looked at a number of the sites that are 8,000 square feet. Thank you.
It's Colleen Granger again. As I look at the plan, I just want to reiterate, you have an inadequate park up there, which is poorly maintained, and only right now do you have some open land that you could perhaps acquire or trade to create a decent park up there. There's not even room for a soccer field now, because once those homes are built, that park forevermore is going to have to serve a lot more people and be as inadequate as it is right now. So again, I don't hear the dialogue about the roads, the impact, the parks, and because we're by the Red Cliffs Reserve, where are you going to put the churches, and where are you going to put the schools? And I just would hope to hear more of that dialogue. I know your planning committee dialogues that, but you as a council are going to make that final decision, not them.
What's inadequate about the park, again? I've enjoyed the grassy area a lot. In fact, we used to take our little Pee-wee baseball team up there to practice, and so I always thought there was a lot of grass space there.
There is the envelope, it's not big enough for a soccer field, it's not, it doesn't have a softball diamond on it. There's, you know, I mean, there's a little field there, but you can't use it for anything that's organized in a team sense.
Yeah, our plan wasn't to hold our teams towards up there, it was to have a nice grassy area.
Which might have been fine for a smaller community, but as the community grows, they're really, it's not going to be adequate.
Well, say, I don't know if many of our parks that have those facilities in, you look, even in the middle of town, they don't have those types of facilities. Our parks are built more as a.
Community park.
Community park, yeah, more recreational.
But those other parks have a lot more space. That is, I think that's probably one of the smallest parks that you have, is that little one over at Greensprings.
Mike, can you talk to the expansion of that park? Do you know, I know you're not the department head, but you're usually in the know on some of these things.
I know nothing.
I really don't know. I know there's the big detention basin there that could be utilized.
Yeah, that's kind of.
It could be utilized as a soccer field or a ball field that could be grassed in and utilized, but I don't know if there's any plans for expansion on it.
It's interesting, because I.
And it is actually probably one of our bigger parks. We've got quite a few smaller parks in that. Sandy House Park, Coral Canyon Park.
I compare that one to maybe the Sullivan Park as it's currently constituted. It's got a lot more space behind it, but the grassy space is quite large there, and we've had baseball teams run around, and we've had other, remember, there's another family playing frisbee while we had our little boys, our little six-year-olds in. So I've always been impressed with the grassy space and hold our team practices up there because it's out of the way, but adequate in that way. No, I haven't played pickleball on it, and I do recall that the splash pad was, I liked a lot of splash pads.
And the access to that park is getting redone with the development.
Yeah, the one off Greensprings Drive was a temporary access.
Correct. But I know that that basin could be utilized in the future.
I've got some history on that park, because we did all those projects. The shaded area you see in there, it's all anticipated to be an extension of that park, and that's why we're honored. The property owners at the time set out a configuration for the park and detention basin to set that site. Now, our area here will be a portion of detention basin, a portion of developed park, but the vast majority of that park that's there now is a big detention basin. And we're, percentage-wise, our improvements will be much greater. We're also, remember, have two private recreational areas. We will have another pool area right here along the pool you saw in things. We'll have two pool and clubhouse areas. The real amenity, outdoor use of this, what we're proposing, is a trail system, which is part of the city's master trail system. Well, we'll have a trail system that comes out of the park here, comes along, it comes up through here, it comes here, and it comes here. It connects a trail system to the regional trail system, and also that connects it to that open space. We really feel that active outdoor trails are really an extension parks, and we've got a lot of that in our project, a significant portion of it.
Jim, you guys, so are you saying that you're going to develop that portion of the park? When you develop, you will actually put that portion of the park?
That's our cost, yes.
It, that's a detention basin that probably doesn't fill that often. We could easily turn it into just a big sweeping grass space.
Well, that's kind of what that park is, yes.
We could grass, and we could hold games there every Saturday.
Yeah, probably will. We seem to need every piece of grass.
Come on up. Oh, yeah, absolutely, come on up.
Hi, my name is Susan Beasley, and I live in Northbridge as well, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and that you hold this public hearing, get our input. So I'm a little nervous, so hopefully it makes sense. I bet most of the people that live in that area don't want to see this development go in, and it's just because we're looking at all of the people that are going to be added, and all those construction vehicles that are going to be going up and down Concord and Greensprings, and we all want to be the last one in, right?
Well, your realtor's probably told you you were.
Yeah, they, you know, I mean, that would be in an ideal world, you know, it just, but that's not going to happen, I guess, and I know that, and I'm realistic. I've been told that this is inevitable, that we're going to have development there. So okay with that. But I guess the thing that, I've gone to the meetings, and Jim has been really great, and so has the people from Sitla, to sit down and talk with us and explain what they're going to do. But I look at this, and I think, I understand you're doing a proposal to change, or consider changing it to be SR, R18, okay, moving it from R18 to R110 for the low-density areas. And I think, why not just make this all R110, consistent with what you want to do for the city in the future? And it's not that we don't trust, right, I don't trust Jim and that they're going to build these beautiful homes there, but it's just that if it's zoned for the R8 level, can they not come in and make these littler developments that are totally inconsistent with the other homes that are in the Greensprings area? So I know they can build bigger, but why not make that threshold that at least it has to be here? And then it's consistent with your vision of having the R10. See, I'm way outside my league in talking these things.
I have a similar feeling. That's why I like their R112, R110 stepping up, because it already caps the minimum size of those. And so I don't know what legal counsel's going to tell us on whether we can do that tonight or not.
Yeah, and at a minimum, I think that's a great effort on their part to address our concerns. The feathering, is that what you call it, where you feather in? But it just seems like, why not have the whole area be that 10 level?
So would you rather it all just be R110 instead of being R12 and then the R2?
That's my belief, just because I know that the homes that are in that area are generally on bigger lots, and it just seems, we don't want to have that really low density.
Would you rather that your neighbor straight across from you be R110 or R112 as the applicant suggests? So you'd like to see it all as R112?
Yes. Well, thank you. That's my two cents.
We appreciate your comments, and this is not an issue that's new to the city. We've had this debate over and over again in other areas of the city, and how do you transition, for example, in the fields, there's one-acre lots, then it goes to half-acre, and then we're going to go, next thing is 10, and then they want to go to eight, and then they want to get some 6,000 square feet. So it's a battle that goes on and on. I'm sympathetic to your position, because everybody wants the smaller lot size in there as far as developers. And, you know, that's one of the reasons I think the zoning is going to be discussed later, to take the R18 out of the low-density zoning, because I believe this is not low-density.
Exactly.
So I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Come on up, Rich.
Come on up, Rich, that's right. Rich Winkett, 1600 North Potomac Avenue, so I'm in the Northbridge Estates. Mr. Mayor, thanks. Commissioners, city commissioners, thank you so much. I should tell the councilmen, shouldn't I? I'm sorry about that. Thank you for service. I mean that wholeheartedly. I believe in representative government, and you guys are doing that. Jim, thank you very much. It's been incredible working with him. It's been very contentious, I'm not going to disagree with him, but he has done a marvelous job trying to, what's the word I'm looking for, lobby, and convinced us this is the appropriate thing. Okay? So with that, I think the niceties are over. In all reality, I think there's three concerns that I wanted to just talk about, and I need to express the concern of one person that couldn't be here too. Number one, I just believe, if you look at Greensprings and you look at Northbridge as a total, everything around and contiguous to this development is at least R110. And I would ask the commission, what is so special about this land that you are saying we're going to take from open space? Think about it. You're taking open space, and by the way, I get to look at it every day, have a beautiful view, I get to look at this for nine years. Okay? Think about that, okay? And all of a sudden, it's special, we're going to give them an R118 and make it low-density when everything else contiguous around it is not. So as a commission, and as a city council, you're saying, we're going to take an open space that everybody is enjoying up there, and we're going to make it low-density. Think about that. That's a critical piece. Number two, I think people have mistaken me for like some non-for-profit type guy. You're not going to find a guy who's more free-market enterprise than me, kind of more for-profit or for growth. In fact, if we're honest with ourselves, I'm part of the growth of there. I moved here a year ago, I'm a full-time resident, I retired here, okay? It's beautiful. I love Washington City. But I think we need to be incredibly careful that we don't overexpose ourselves again and throw what I would call the supply-demand ratio out of whack. Think about it. You have multiple pieces of land and homes just in the Greensprings area. You're going to now take another 326 homes and throw into that equation, in fact, I think you're going to throw the supply-demand equation out of whack again. Think about it. And if you just, remember the charts you put up just not too long ago? Do you remember the tax revenue from real estate in '07? What was happening to it? It was decreasing. Do we want that to happen again? We've been here before. We've been here before, and we just don't want to just keep, and I'm pro-growth. What I'm not for is indiscriminate growth, you know, growth. Growth that's not smart, growth that's not well-thought-out. Concern number three, okay? I am absolutely convinced, and I believe the traffic study, I'm not questioning the integrity of the traffic study, but I get to sit and look at Concord quite a bit, and I understand it was built as a road to go through, but it's full of construction trucks now, just for our neighborhood. Can you imagine, for the next nine years, as you make that road with a median in it, one of the major roads right into the subdivision? Think about that. If you were living there, if you guys were living there, and I don't know where you live, would you want that apart for the next nine years? And that's something I think you've got to really take in serious consideration. The last thing, and I really thought about whether I'd bring this up or not, but I'm going to, okay? I'm a big believer in representative government, big believer in it, okay? But at the zoning and planning committee, right at the end of the committee, after the vote was over, I'm pretty sure I heard the applicant asked for a withdraw of the application publicly, in a public hearing. So that's why I'm surprised it's even here. I guess my question is, why is it here?
Okay, well, I'm a councilman that works with the planning commission, so in the context of that, I think what he was trying to do was modify his request. I think he realized that the way the planning commission was receiving this, they were not totally comfortable with the 8,000-square-foot lots. I think he addressed what concerns that they brought with the lots specifically to the south and the feathering of the density. So I believe that was the context. Now, I had no idea that he had done that for tonight, but my question after that, after being at that meeting, was how do you address the density specifically right here? But I think your point's well-taken, that that's a lot of R18. I mean, I agree with you that, but I don't think he was serious when he said, I want to withdraw the application. I think what he meant was, in the context of the meeting and the way that the dialogue was going back and forth, the context was, I think he realized that he wasn't going to get blanket R18, he wanted to modify it. Now, I don't know if we can do that, or even if the council will vote to approve what he's presented tonight.
Right, and that's really not, I don't think it's a question for the council members. I think it's a question probably for the city attorney. Whether we're joking or not in a public hearing, you're on the record.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any questions for me? Oh, come on, guys.
I just wanted to state a response, and it's not to be controversial, but I just.
Oh, please, it's not a problem with me, it's not, I promise.
I was thinking that however many years ago that the Northbridge Estates was proposed, I'm sure there was a section of owners just to the south that came and opposed it on some of the very same principles. And I tend to believe that a property owner should have the ability to do, to develop their property, but within rules and guidelines, and that's where we step in here, is not so much you can't develop, but we're going to ask you, if you wish to develop, to develop within the framework that we, as your public body, try to set for you. So it's constantly a push and a pull. Been developed in the fields, push and pull.
I mean, I will tell you, I think you guys have the toughest job in the world right now. It's a tough job. I understand that, and I know, I'm sure that's the case. On the other hand, representative government allows us to come and voice our names.
Yep.
That's important, we appreciate you, Jim.
You bet.
It certainly is important to us.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions?
No other question. I do have a comment on your point number two, where you talk about the supply and demand, and I have to respectfully disagree with that. I'd hate to have the government determine what is the appropriate number of anything. You know, the supply and demand's really going to determine. If a builder thinks there's enough demand for these homes, and he's willing to lay his money down to do it, that's the risk he's taking. As a government official, I'm not going to say that's a bad deal, you shouldn't be putting your money there, we don't think there's enough demand for it. That argument, I don't buy that much, but I appreciate you making it anyway.
That's great.
Okay.
But you're voting for it. If you vote that way, never mind, okay? Sorry, anything else? Thank you.
Thanks. So council staff, I know the initial application was R18, and that that received an up-or-down vote at the commission, and that same application has now been brought towards us. Are you ready to share any opinion on some of the proposals we've heard?
Well, yeah, if the question is, and this question's been asked. Yeah, so if the question is, can one come in? Does the city council have the authority to modify or amend a request for a zone change? Yes, it's always available, and in fact, typically, at least on a zone change by state law, this isn't even a public hearing, the city council stage. The public hearing is usually at the planning commission stage, that comes up to the record for the city council, but we have always.
When you say isn't, you say isn't a required public hearing?
No, state law. Yeah, yeah, it's just it's got to be a public meet, just basically an open meet.
An open meet, but the planning commission must be a public hearing.
And we've always handled them as a public hearing. We allow everybody to give the input that they want, and the input that you guys want to get from, typically from the neighbors in the area, that's generally speaking, that's 90% of what comes. But the state law, the state law provides that, as the planning commission recommends, after their public hearing, they give the recommendation to the city council, one way or the other, in terms of the application and the zone change. The city council, by state law, they can accept that, they can outright reject it, deny it, or they can amend it as they find is appropriate for that particular area. So there's always the, there's always the option that city councils can listen to, take all the public input, hear everything. A lot of times, through this public exchange of ideas and concerns and everything else, you know, there's a clarity that comes about for city councils, because they get to absorb everything they've heard and kind of put it into context with what they already have for a general plan, and knowing what they've thought as they prepared a general plan, they can adjust that. So state law allows that to be adjusted. So what is required is it has to first be, it has to be first be presented at a public hearing to the planning commission for recommendation to the city council. That stage, city council can accept it straight as it is, reject it straight as it is, or make adjustments as it is. We haven't had that issue come up very often, and oftentimes, it can be because, my concern has always been over the years, is that if we ever took advantage or wanted to use that provision of state law that lets you adjust it, just that zone as you see fit, is that if it's ever a higher use, or a more dramatic use, so somebody came up an R12, and city council felt like, oh, you know what, that ought to be an R110, it's clearly ought to be an R110, everything around it's that way. I've always really advocated against using that for that reason, because at the first public hearing, people didn't ever expect it to be even a higher density and higher use than they did before. When you start to change that zone in a way which is frankly exactly where most of the public's concern is, and that is, I want less density, so if you make that zone a zone, okay, we can call it, but if you go to a lower density, tends to be that nobody is caught off guard, nobody has a concern that would have been. is caught off-guard, nobody has a concern that would have been made additional to you at that time that would have brought more clarity to the fact that now instead of having 10 homes, you've got eight homes. So their arguments that they don't like any homes is still there, but to say that they're going to have a different argument because of the eight homes as opposed to 10, I don't think anybody is in any way harmed or damaged or somehow their ideas weren't taken into account. Can you reduce it? Yeah. Could you feather it if you thought that was appropriate? You could. I think if that's a possibility, either one of those, I would hope that you may want to allow the public to comment on that based on that, because they may have different comments. I don't know if they'd be, but they might. At least gives you at least the thought that they've given you all the input based on what you might consider doing. So can you do it? Yeah. Have we done it very often? Yeah.
So do I understand you correctly then to say that under state law, even if what we decided was more harmful than the initial public notice, technically we could still do that?
You could, but my concern would be, you know, somebody would have a pretty good argument.
But if state law allows it, what's the argument? You know, that's what I'm trying to say. If you're saying there's still an argument out there, notwithstanding state law allowing us to change it, what is it?
Well, that would be, cities' arguments would be exactly that. That is, you gave me the right to do that. It doesn't matter what it is. We took the input on it as a city, we gave the notice that some changes were going to be made. So, you know, even if you say it harms you because now they have 20 homes instead of 10 homes, eh, state law says we can do it. That's our authority, it's our legislative authority to do that.
Citizens' kind of argument would be, yeah, I saw the notice, you told me it's going to be R110, so I didn't get worried, because I was happy with R110, but then when it became R18, I was just surprised and amazed, and so...
That's why I've always, that's why over the years, I've always encouraged away from that. If the use is ever... I mean, the reality is, in residential subdivisions, nobody that doesn't own the land, anybody that lives around that, never comes in and argues for higher density, ever. So to say that if you made it actually lower density with that, with the discretion you have under state law, the harm to those who are concerned about it just... The concern is less, is all I can say. Their arguments would be the same, just can't be as light as intent. But you have that right to do that.
Yeah. I certainly understand as a practical matter, nobody's going to complain if you give them more than what was in the initial notice. I just want to make certain, I understand the extent of the laws, we can go either way based on how you read it.
And it just says they can adjust it as they determine. So yeah, again, I'm not sure I necessarily agree with that, because I think if the use is ever more intense...
The public ought to have a notice of that.
Yeah. And I know a city council like you, this is a city council, this particular makeup of city council wants the public to know what's going on, that you take their input, which is, you know, unbelievable with the patience of, you know, a kindergarten teacher sometimes, you just listen to everything left, because it's great. So this group is probably never, ever going to be a problem. So that's the good thing about it.
Just to quick address a couple of the prior comments, briefly confirmed this, we originally applied for an R110 zone on the entire thing. Our original business model proposed, as SITLA, when we won the RFP, was based on the historic pattern of development in Greensprings, which was develop lots and sell them to multiple builders. I could sell 40 lots tomorrow of R110 lots in this project. We've already got significant interest. I think one of the reasons we won the proposal was that we provided a business model that was truly tied to market demand. We have no debt, we have no carrying cost on land, we pay for lots as they closed, we build 100% of infrastructure with cash. Our proposal is to build phases as small as 15 lots up to whatever the market demands. We believe very strongly, and you'll see us again in a couple of weeks with our Sienna Hills projects, and we only have three builders there, even though we have six or eight that want to be in there. Currently, there's two demands for housing in Washington County. There's a builder demand and there's a consumer demand. The builder demand currently greatly outpaces the consumer demand. We do not want... We could look really good our first year, but we're here with thousands of lots to develop. We have to have a sustainable business plan, and the worst thing you can have, and North Bridge has experienced, that recession will follow their own, is to have vacant lots in your subdivision. We don't want to build more lots than what the builder wants and ultimately can sell to the consumer. So our business model is to build phases that match market demand. That's why we have such a wide range of timeframe. Our original performance was five years, but we built two-year options into that because we don't know exactly where the housing market's going to go, but we know it's going to fluctuate. We know it's not going to just continue to grow all their scale there. And we truly believe that in the last year, the growth and escalation of prices kind of indicates that we kind of lost a little bit of memory of what happened in 2005 and 2006 and 2007. And we don't want to get caught in that. And our model is based on a price that's sustainable, and that's less than what we could probably get from individual builders now. That's why it's so important that with the plan we've got and the modifications we've made, where we fit the project to the product, not the product to the project, that we have the ability to do 80-by-110 lots, that's the 8800-square-foot lot. There's only 25 of 210 of them because of curvy-linier design of them.
Say that again?
25 of our 210 single-family lots and lot we're proposing in this zone change are the 8800 square feet. There's nothing under 88. Our mandate from the builder was...
Take us to the next lot size?
Nine to 10, and then 10 to 12. Our average lot size of these 210 lots...
How many in the nine-to-10 range?
Sixty-five, was it? Yeah, 60. But most of the... There again, we didn't look at lot size, we looked at frontage and depth. All our lots were minimum 110 feet deep, because they found that the escapes in Entrada, they didn't have enough backyard, they needed a deeper lot. So there again, it's not... Believe me, I've been here, you guys have seen me enough, I know your reservations, I was intimately involved in the Fields project. I'll donate my time with Drew and other city staff members to try to get your PUD modified so we can do that. The other thing I highly encourage you, that other cities have, is called a lot-size averaging. Under St. George City's lot-size averaging, I could apply for an R110 and meet it, because my lot-size average is 10,350 square feet. And less than my, you know, less than that meets the requirement. So there's ways to get around this hurdle you guys are fighting. Believe me, I did not want to apply for an R18.
You did the lot-size averaging just in your proposal for the R18 age area here?
Yeah.
Average?
10,350 square feet.
In that area?
For those 210 lots in that area.
And so, tell us, you said that you'd be willing to sign a development agreement that holds it to that. What protection do you see that that gives us? And Drew, if you have any input on that?
It's the best protection I can give you. It's a contract between us and the developer and the city, and as long as we're developing that project, we're bound by the development agreement. You have development agreements with all your PCDs, for instance. The PCD is owned with the legal contract that fixes the PCD is the development agreement. So we're willing to do the same development agreement with you at our preliminary plat that fixes everything we tell you tonight.
Does that make, what assurances does that give you? You deal with this more intimately than we do.
Yeah, and we also do development agreements on our bonus density. So, you know, whatever that approval is, they've got a bill like that, or we don't have to accept it.
That makes me more familiar with it.
You know, again, you don't have to accept it because, yeah, they agreed to you.
It's a meet to the conditions that anything that comes back doesn't.
Yeah, and that's basically what it is, is they're putting conditions on them that you both agreed to, and if they meet them, you approve. If they don't, you don't have to approve.
And we've gone along with deciding we didn't want to have to do that with every single subdivision, because they ended up trying to just be canned. The extent that you have concerns about it, that's why we started doing one of the tales I represented years ago at every preliminary plat stage.
Yeah, they're a great vehicle, but I think if you do too many of them, the policing just gets to be kind of nightmarish for staff to have to just, you know, everyone's different. Oh, these guys promised they're going to put red trees in, and these ones had blue trees, and, you know...
Yeah, I'd rather have standards out of standards if we had to apply across the board, that we decide on the council, that's the following.
But it is a great vehicle and tool that can be used in certain situations. So, and they are common.
Certainly. Certainly, if the council did have an inclination at all to do something like a feathering, which you've at least been told is within your authority, this is, the development agreement is one way you can collar that and have some assurance with it.
Yeah, because, you know, straight zoning or when you get to that, you're really not supposed to put conditions on zoning.
On the zone change.
But if they agree to go into a development agreement, preliminary plat stage, and...
Well, it's on the record.
Yeah, that's...
My understanding is if we accept Council Starky's opinion and the applicant's requested change, we would just zone it straight, R112, R110, and then R18. There's not even a need for an agreement at that point, unless we wanted to have conditions within those zones.
Yeah, you wouldn't. If you did the feather like this, I don't know why you'd want to do it, developing really is just double, you know, strapping it, so...
Well, some of the things we've heard... I think...
Which is fine, because then if that's what they've promised them and they want it to be in writing for those folks that they promised, if they want to bring one to you, fine, go into it, that'd be...
But we wouldn't be in a position to prevent that.
No.
Yeah, there wasn't a law for anybody.
Well, it doesn't exist either.
Yeah, but we'd see it at the preliminary plat stage, you'd see that, and then that agreement would come with it.
You're welcome to go if you'd like.
I'm Ross Johnson, the North Bridge Estates, just North Bridge. I guess for me, the bottom line is that R18 is not compatible with any of the other zoning around the area that I saw. Anything that's less than R110 is not compatible. So this feathering approach that's been put on the board now here later still leaves us with a whole bunch of R18 properties. So, you know, verbal agreements are nice to talk about, notes on things are nice to talk about, but in the end, the only thing that really counts is what you say is the zoning requirement. That's cast, it's written, it's, you know, it's law. So that, my recommendation would be that you vote to follow the recommendation of the planning commission and go back for a plan that goes through that whole approach. If I was king, I'd make it all R115, but...
If I was king, there wouldn't be anybody there, including North Bridge.
We'd be still coiling there, wouldn't we?
Still be rabbit hunting up there, yeah.
Kyle Paisley with SITLA. I just wanted to stand as the landowner, and I appreciate all the owners that are surrounding, and I've been through this on pieces all over the county and numerous counties with surrounding landowners, and I appreciate that, being a landowner, representing a landowner myself and their concerns. And we want to be good neighbors. We do. Our mission is unique. We will outlive, as a developer, everybody in this room. We will outlive, our presence in Washington County will be here long after all of us are gone. And that is a position that most developers do not find themselves in. And because of that, we have taken a special approach to the way we plan and a special approach to the way that we look at properties. As you know, in the time that I've been here and my predecessors before me, we don't plan in a bubble. We didn't look at this piece and the deals that come on this piece strictly in relation to this piece and its environs, but we looked at this in relation to Sienna Hills, Coral Canyon, our property on the north end of Washington at the airport, our St. George properties, our Leeds properties, our properties in the county. We look at this in the context of just what's best for that area, what's best for our trust, but what's best for the city and the community, and how can that be planned to make the best impact possible? And by doing so, we feel very comfortable with what's been presented here, and we're comfortable with the feathering concept that's been presented by the developer. I would also just like to bring to mind that we recently went through the general plan process for this piece of property with the council, almost exactly as constituted except for Councilmember Neisen, who's come on in the meantime. And as such, this meets all the parameters, all of the guidelines that were set forth in the general plan, and meets the vision that we had for the general plan that we set forth at the time, and feel like that we did that in good faith with the city as we do all of our planning. And so, we would ask as the landowner, and I know it's hard to balance the rights of one landowner against another, I understand that, but we would ask respectfully that you continue on with what was already agreed to in the general plan and further the zoning request as is presented here, and feel like that would be a fair way to solve the issue. No one's going to walk away completely happy, including myself, if that's done. However, that's probably the best solution that can be found. And pragmatism is part of the politics of a city council, and I understand that and appreciate that, and would ask your vote in that regard. Thank you.
Kyle, would you state that the general plan process was done in good faith, and I appreciated how it happened? It was a year or so ago, but I recall the meetings and everything, and it went through the planning commission, so I would agree with you that you did a good job doing that in good faith.
Thank you, and I would reciprocate that to the city. Your pleasure to work with among the municipalities I work with across the state, one of the best. Thank you.
Karen Westover, North Bridge Estates. I'm sorry to take up so much time, but we've recently moved from California, and we moved here not just to get away from California, but for family reasons, so that was our primary reason. But our secondary reason was to get away from the community we lived in, because the community left us somewhere along the way, because we just weren't paying attention, which is why we're coming to city council meetings. We don't want the same thing to happen again. It took, in the community that we live in, by the time we left, and every time we go back, it's even worse, to go two miles through our city can take as much as 20 minutes. So when you talk about the exit at Greensprings and stuff, that's nothing compared to what we have been dealing with, but it's what we dealt with to begin with, and that's what's going to happen here if something isn't done about it. But that's beside the point. As far as this particular section out of this development, I would request that you not okay the R18, only because, I mean, even with these things, with the agreement, a development agreement or whatever, because the caveat that Jim said was, as long as we develop this property, we never know what's going to happen tomorrow, but once that zoning is there, it's there and you can't change it. So if somebody else ends up developing it, which I hope they don't, because as everybody has said, we appreciate the time that they have spent, that Kyle has spent, that Jim has spent, that Ben has spent with us going over these things, and we feel much better about it than we did when we first heard about it. But things change, and you never know what's going to happen tomorrow. And I know that from experience, having owned an office building that we bought under the strength of a Fortune 500 tenant that had a 10-year lease who left after two years. And it's like, yeah, you can get into a lot of legal battles, but, you know, what's the point? You know, you just deal with it as it comes. So you never know what's going to happen. So I know they have all of the best intentions, but I think we need to have it the way they say it's going to be and have it in the record, that that is not just an agreement with them, but if something should happen, that somebody else can come in and say, okay, this whole area up here, two-thirds of it is R18, and that's what we're going to do with the whole thing, or if you pass the whole thing of R18 and just have an agreement on the side that somebody could possibly in the future do that. I hope that's not the case, but you never know, and it's better to, you know, cover the bases than to just go ahead and assume it's going to be exactly the way everybody says. Much as we would like that to be, it's not, there's no guarantees.
You know, you make a really good point, because we've seen that before. Something happens, approvals, and then the developer doesn't go through with it. I do recall from the planning commission meeting that there is a unique arrangement between SITLA and the developer as it pertains to the property. Can you speak to that, Kyle, a little bit too, or Jim, either of you? Because my understanding is SITLA is the lot, is the property owner until at some point along the build project, then it... Until the closing of the lot. So SITLA maintains ownership of the entire property until the lots are sold, which that gives me some assurance knowing SITLA's... gives me some assurance knowing Sitla's... So maybe answering my own question. If you have something to add to it, but yeah.
I do have a question about that.
When Karen's done, though, I wouldn't...
Because I know this isn't finalized, I know, with Brennan Holdings or with Henry Walker. I know they're under contract, but as long as it's signed and as long as these things happen, this is what's going to happen. But...
We haven't signed contracts.
Right, I understand, but you did say it wasn't final until all of these things happened. Right. Right. So it's not finalized, but something could happen that it's not them, but if it's been already zoned as R18, they could, Sitla, I know they took the best deal, but they'd take the second best deal if this one fell through, and it could end up being with somebody that wouldn't, that would want everything R18, and it's zoned that way, that's what we're going to do. So just because of that reason...
We had that happen in Coral Canyon, and Sitla stepped up and said, well, just, because we, what was happening is the purchaser had gone de-thumbs and went to a foreclosure sale. Sitla, because they didn't want it being sold in little chunks to a bunch of foreclosure purchasers, they went in and bottomed hell out, and came in and took full responsibility for it. And so, I've been very impressed with how Sitla managed the Coral Canyon. And Coral Canyon got hit with the downturn, and there were substantial opportunities for that, to get parcelled up into all sorts of small pieces and have all sorts of different landowners come in, because they were concerned about uniformity in the entire community. I'm of the opinion they made a significant investment back into that and into their reputation, so I would hope, and I believe that they would do the same thing in this one if that were the case. So Council Starkey, is it true that a development agreement can attach to the land, that it can apply to any subsequent owner?
Oh, yeah, no question about it. You know, our legislature tinkers with some of the, always tinkers with our, with our planning and municipal, municipal stuff all the time, so you can never outguess the fact that they may come in and say, oh, the Leans, the Pryor, and all those stuff. Bottom line is, that's why we do, that's why we do this, that's why they're created. In fact, personally down in this area, when we did it for the Walmart distribution center, and the development agreement went with that, locked in all of that land out there where that distribution center is, and that's why it all locked into where it was and included amongst that, they had to, certain land had to be donated to Walmart to do it, but it locked in every bit of that. And it's still, it's locked into this, if you go out there and buy a piece of land, you're going to have something tied on it based on that development agreement.
That would get recorded against the property.
And that's what happened.
As a document of record.
Assurance as to how it's...
Yeah, and so, now again, nobody could, I mean, the bankruptcy courts have their own little set of rules that they adjust and get to apply to, that let people out of all kinds of...
But we're not really dealing with a bankruptcy here where Sitla's the property. We're not dealing with...
No, and that's, and that's the thing, and when you do it like this with Sitla, Sitla has, you have Sitla sign it as well as, especially if they're doing it like we've been told, they're doing it on, you know, that they're basically holding a note on it. So Sitla locks, Sitla signs up on it, potential owner who's presenting to us signs up on it, and it always ties with land. We have very specific things...
This is the similar arrangement you had, that you have.
Yeah, in fact, we had to modify. In fact, we get a development agreement for the Coral Canyon stuff, I mean, back in the 90s, where we did a development agreement to lock in all of that stuff, which excluded the city having to pick up water from the water district they have out there, but before, after sand?
Suncor.
Suncor. Did I describe this...
Suncor came, we had to modify the amendment, I mean, we had to modify the development agreement, the development agreement locked on the whole land.
Did I describe this Suncor default accurately?
You did, you did describe it accurately. Kyle Paisley with Sitla again. And this is a model we prefer now throughout the state, that we maintain title of the land until it's passed to the final homeowner. This is what we do in Suncor, at Coral Canyon, I got Suncor on the brain now. This is what we're going to do here. We maintain title until the very end and until it's passed, for the very reason that then, should a developer or one of our partners go belly up, again, like I stated, we're in a special position. We survive them, and we know we're going to survive them. And so to maintain the quality and the plans and everything that we put in, because if this goes sour, or if Coral Canyon were to have gone sour, that affects Sienna Hills, that affects our South Block property, that affects everything for us. We view it completely different than a scrape and burn developer that will come in, who may be here tomorrow and may not. And by holding that title, I mean, obviously, there's perks to that for the developer, but the perks for us are, we control it. We control the quality, and we actually prefer to have development agreements because it maintains continuity. Should I go, or should Aaron go, or, you know, unfortunately, our director just passed away, if something like that happens, the continuity continues. And that's something you're not going to get with any other developer, or very few other developers, that have that kind of longevity and that kind of commitment, I think, to quality that we carry as a development group. So I think you mentioned that right. The one or two times we've tried it where we've just sold the property outright, we've ended up in trouble. And the development has not gone the way we want, so we won't do that anymore. Those were experiments that failed, and we won't do, so...
Well, and I appreciate that you cut the bag on the ones that did fail too.
Absolutely rich. We haven't closed the public hearing yet.
That's right. Rich Winget, North Bridge Estates, mayor, council members again. You're making open space into a PUD. Doesn't sound right, okay? Now, I just, and the other thing I just wanted to say, as a full-time resident, tax-paying citizen, I feel like I'm being ignored on my point. And my point is, how did this, I call it legislation, but how did this proposal get here when the applicant asked to withdraw it verbally? I haven't got an answer on that, so whether it's...
I'll answer it, I'll answer it.
Okay, good.
They filed a paper application that they...
Okay, good.
There was a discussion, the Planning Commission, of trying to achieve what we're doing tonight, and whether it would be better withdrawn, we submit, or take the denial recommendation and appeal it to you guys. And at that, at the mic, I said, then if we can do what we're proposing tonight, then I don't want to withdraw it, I want to take it on to city council. Yes, there was a discussion, and yes, there was a talk about withdrawal. No, at the end of it, I specifically asked that this application be brought to you to consideration.
And as a matter of process, Mr. Winget, they filled out the proper application and paid the fee, and that's what commenced the process. And then they engaged the process far enough to get a vote. At that point, they could have withdrawn the whole thing and said, we're done, we're not happy, but...
Do you have to do that verbally or in writing?
The withdrawal?
Yes.
The withdrawal is by them, not by us.
Right.
I believe that withdrawal has to go in writing, correct?
Okay, that answers the question.
Yeah, they could have addressed all sorts of options at that meeting.
Okay.
But based on the vote, they still had a right to continue to push that application to the next level. And so that's why it's here.
They'll go and withdraw now.
Yeah, they can withdraw whenever. We don't have to sit here and wait for them to say, is it okay if we withdraw? And once they say withdraw, we say, yeah, it's ended, it's over. The right is theirs. They prepared the application, they paid the fee, and the right to engage the process is theirs, even if they've discussed withdrawing it. The withdrawal is also theirs. We don't get to withdraw it for them just because they've discussed withdrawal.
Thank you. Anybody else before we close the public hearing?
I'll just make it brief. I figure I'd wait till the end here. My name is Ben Willetts. I work for Henry Walker Homes. I'm the manager of project development, and I've been working with Jim and Kyle on this project here. I just wanted to give a little quick nickel tour of who we are, what we do, just to let some of you who may know, who may or may not know a little bit about our company and what value proposition I think we bring to this project. We started as a spinoff, actually during the recession, and a handful of the current owners and presence of the company spun off from a few more prominent developers throughout the state of Utah. And so we've actually thrived and succeeded quite well during the downturn. So with people, and I completely understand where people's apprehension comes in and where their concerns come in, and being able to come into a project like this and say, well, how's it going to oversaturate, what's it going to do with my property values and all these things? I've worked in different jurisdictions throughout the western United States for almost the past 20 years, and I've worked on both sides of the coin. I've worked in municipalities, working for government agencies. I've worked for consulting firms and land planning. I've worked for development companies. So I really, truthfully understand on where these concerns and different points of view do come from. And as far as the residents go, again, I completely understand, and that sentiment doesn't change, whether it's in Arizona, whether it's in California, whether it's in Nevada, whether it's in St. George, Utah. Everybody gets nervous when something changes, and everybody has that sentiment of, I don't want to see something change. But part of that also is, a lot of times, people don't understand and realize why they don't understand, why they don't want something to change, other than it's different, and it doesn't meet the same thing that they're used to. If many people, if we were to really sit here and talk about what's the difference between an 8,000-square-foot lot or a 10,000-square-foot lot or 12,000, and why, other than it's a bigger or smaller lot, most people would not be able to say truthfully why, other than it's bigger or smaller, that it's affecting them to say, I don't want this to happen. And from our standpoint, what we have found, and what we have found has made us successful, and especially in this unique market in St. George, is that we understand and know who our target market is. And as you see in not only some of the areas in North Bridge that are still yet to be developed after many, many years, but throughout the entire county, a lot of what has been developed over time in this area has been on speculation, and that has been what has caused a lot of the turmoil that we see now in the market, and what caused it to crash was pure speculation. We have tried to come into this market in St. George with a little bit less of that speculation, because we have done the homework and understand what our market and target market is down here. And now, can I guarantee that we are going to blow through this in five years or six years? No. I wish I could. If I could, I'd be retired at the tender age of 42, and I wouldn't be standing here right now, because I would have been able to guarantee many other things. But we feel that we have done as much as we can to come in here and say as truthfully as we can that we have a good plan, and that working with somebody like Jim and Mr. Brennan with Sitla, that with that scenario, and as we just talked about, landholding and the infrastructure and all these other things that we do, that the team that we have compiled in here, and we've talked a little bit about this with the residents, that if we were to come in here and parse this thing out to five, six, 10 different builders, I don't think they would like what the outcome of that would be. And even if those were 10 and 12,000 square foot lots, because as we see throughout the county, when that happens, it typically goes into defunct modes, and you're going to see that thing pockmarked with homes here and there and here and there, because you're going to have eight and 10 different developers come in, and they're going to do a little here and a little there, and a little here and a little there. Whereas when we come in with a master plan on this kind of a development, and we can take it down on a schedule as the economy will dictate, we can march through on our plan, use our marketing engine, use all of our in-house folks who know how to market and drive these kind of projects in an effective manner, that we then are also limiting our losses with, again, we don't have to carry the land, we don't have to carry the infrastructure and so on. So from that standpoint, and again, we're probably well past our time here, but I just wanted to give you a little bit more sense of who we are and where we've come to this point in the community, and then, again, our commitment to product and the type of development that we are committed to up here, and that we know from our track record it has been successful. And again, just because the lot is smaller, that does not mean that it is a less valuable home. And coming again from many different areas in the west, and even here in St. George, one of the most successful developments that we have has everything ranging from five-acre lots all the way down to 6,000 square feet, and those 6,000 square foot lots have not diminished one bit the value of those five-acre lots within that community. Again, change is not a bad thing. People just need to understand, and I think get a little bit better sense of what that change is, just because it's not the same that's right next door, or it's the same that's just around the corner from them, that doesn't mean it's a bad thing. Any questions for me? I'm about out of breath here as well, I need a drink of water, so... Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are we ready to close the public hearing? Public?
Looks like, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Aye, aye, aye.
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 Okay. About where we're at. Death. Consideration to approve an ordinance adopting a zone change request, Z-13-17, to change present zone from O.S. to R1-8, so...
Mayor, just before any motions made, I'd just like to state that straight R18 zoning, I would tend to uphold the Planning Commission recommendation, so I'm not sure if anybody wants to have a motion on just a straight R18, or if we should just focus our discussion on the, I guess, the amended proposal that they've presented.
You mean R110?
Well, no, at the Planning Commission, they, and in the application phase, all of it was R18. Tonight, they've suggested this three-step, R12, R10, R8.
You make a good point, Councilman Segal, because the reason for the recommendation for denial was that the zoning, the R18 zoning designation does not conform to surrounding zoning or development. And I thought the citizens and the neighbors up there made a good point with that, and I think they had good reason to recommend denial. I am more comfortable with what's been posed with the R112 and the R110 that is near to the larger lots.
My comment is, is I think it makes a step towards it, but I still think you have all those lots along that boundary line that still have no buffer between them, and it is such an abrupt change from something that is a larger zoned area, and I think the R18 is really not compatible with what's there right now. So even with the feathering, I would be inclined to still uphold the Planning Commission's denial.
I think I agree.
No, this is the bad part, not getting to see preliminary plats, because it simply could be, especially if you've got an average lot size of over 10,000 square foot there, obviously there's some bigger lots. Scattered through that, if those lots were adjacent to those properties, then obviously those concerns become somewhat mitigated.
I think at least what I've heard is, there's no sense considering the straight R18 for everything.
No.
Like the application, it sounds like that would be upheld. Yes, maybe we discuss...
Yeah, I think the discussion I'm interested is possibly the tiering, feathering.
I see on one side the R18 has some conflict with the zoning to the west, but to the east, that PUD, in fact, it's, you know, there will be some buffering from that identity there, and so I... Yeah, see, it's compatible on one side and not on the other. Mayor, I would, unless there's more discussion, I would make the motion, and it's based on Councilman Starkey's opinion tonight, that the council consider an ordinance adopting a zone change request from open space to R112, R110, and R18 as depicted on the map presented to us tonight. Council Starkey, is that a sufficient motion for your concern?
Yeah.
I would like to, I would like to state that there would also be, well, I'd like to state that there'd also be a development agreement.
I think that would be a...
I'm not sure that... Okay, so my motion would be that council consider to approve an ordinance adopting a zone change request from open space to R112 on the southerly portion as depicted, R112 on the middle portion as depicted, and R18 on the upper portion as depicted. Excuse me, R112, R110, R18. And that also a development agreement that governs this particular property and binds the developer and the landowner to the representations that are made, also be prepared in sight.
So if zoning into effect would be subject to any acceptable development agreement...
The zoning going into effect would be subject to that development agreement being completed and accomplished.
Yeah.
I would second that.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the table.
Aye, aye.
Triman, aye.
Staley, aye.
Sig Miller, aye.
Turick, aye.
Okay, that passes three to two.
So, and just so just to clarify to the audience, that being hopefully by next city council, we're going to have a, a development agreement for your consideration that will lock in kind of this basic thing, that it's not acceptable to you guys, that zone doesn't go through.
Yes, and I. And, and the public has another chance to be present at the time for that, that development agreement. I'm not going to say the mayor will give them a public hearing because I don't know if he will or won't, but the, at least a chance to, to know that the process will happen and that development agreement will be considered public. I would almost rather see it when they present their preliminary plat. I think it makes more sense to do it at that point.
Then the zones are getting changed.
That's fine.
I think you don't, I think you don't have to.
Trigger the.
Noticing is the same, is it's 300 feet. And I want to make that clear because there was this comment about someone who lived ways down. The code for zone change general plan preliminary plat is 300 feet from the proposed. Yeah, if they're going to, I don't know if they're going to preliminary plat the whole, that area at one time, are you?
I would suggest that even if it's not, you set it up the same, at least the same distance that you did with this.
It'll be the same people that got noticed will get them again. It will just follow what the stat, the statute says that we'll do, so that's what the code is. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Between these, they just have legal descriptions of the map, they exhibit the 10, R110, R112, I'll leave those for two times. Thank you. Thank you for all your time. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, we'll move on to item K, public hearing for consideration to approve a general plat, plan amendment G-13-08 by amending table 6-1, general comparison between the land use, plan map and zoning designations. Mayor? This will be a public hearing, yes.
Yeah, right after I give the order.
In fact, I think I was asked about this last night, so I hope that was quick enough, Councilman Triman. Here we, here we go. This is the one we've been waiting for and the council talked about, um, a couple months back. Now, the city was, the city is the applicant on this particular application, is wishing to amend a portion of the general plan, more specifically the, uh, chapter six, general elements of the land use plan, which contains in it table 6.1 or 6-1, which is titled general comparisons between the land use, plan map designations and zoning designations. Uh, the request amendment is to move the zoning designation of single-family residential 8,000 square foot minimum or the R18 designation as currently found in the low-density residential category, have it moved into the medium-density residential category for the purpose of keeping larger lots, specifically the R110 and R112 in the low-density residential designation. This would join the R18 designation with the R16 and R2 zoning categories in table 6-1 of chapter six in the general plan. Uh, recently, the city council felt the need, uh, to try to protect the Washington Fields area is what drove this particular amendment as a development there was requesting smaller lots in areas and that's been taking pace, place over the past year. Uh, they felt that moving this lot size, the R18 category out of the low-density and into the medium-density would help towards that goal of protecting the fields area while still allowing for development to take place. Sample of how the amendment will affect table 6, 1, uh, can be found at the end of the report. Um, staff has prepared that, uh, took it to a public hearing with the Planning Commission on December the 4th of 2013. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendment to the Washington City General Plan, chapter six, table 6-1, general comparisons between the land use, plan map, designations and zoning designations, moving the R18 designation from the low-density residential into the medium-density residential as outlined in the chart attached to your report, which we have on the, the screen at this time and based on the findings, um, as, as outlined in your report. Uh, so with that, uh, there's an ordinance attached to your report and this is part thereof. And I hope this covers what the council wanted in, at that directive given a couple months ago, so.
I recall we, I think it stemmed from the units per acre column. Didn't make a lot of sense to, anyway, not to belabor the point. We thought that the R18 fit better in the medium-density designation and the, and the units per acre calculation than it did in the low-density.
But it was several developments that were similar to this, where if you would have taken the average lot size, it probably would have exceeded 10,000, but with much less guarantees that, that this development gave, they were coming in for an R18. And you'll remember that we were bullied on the zoning issue before that was an R16, so we were looking for some protection.
Yeah.
I hadn't considered the average lot, lot, lot size averaging that came up tonight, which almost makes me want to think that a lot size averaging approach might give developers more flexibility around terrain because that was in different projects, the R18 makes sense, but it doesn't mean that every lot's R18. Because in Sugarplum, which we've actually voted to approve that, but that was the specific one that, that spurred this, um, I'm almost of the opinion that we leave it, but, but put in some sort of a caveat for a lot size averaging to make that be a 10,000 square foot, which would give developers more flexibility.
I still like this, though. This doesn't change the designation at all. It essentially changes the relationship to the general plan.
Correct.
So general plan areas that, that used to be low-density would be R112, R110 and R18, but now they can come in and say, yeah, we're low-density, that means we have 10 and 12.
Those are all. Those are the only two options of zoning that you're allowed to.
The way they get one, they get eight is if they're on a medium height or medium density. So I, I still think the, the shift is appropriate.
Oh, it's very appropriate. Yeah, again, it's those.
You could still get a lot averaging for your zone. It, it worked that way.
The issue was, and it's, it's, what are the odds that it falls right after this discussion? Because we've had how many discussions in the fields with similar situations as we've dealt with tonight, with a roomful of neighbors that are concerned that the lot sizes are too small. And being sympathetic to that, we're trying to address those concerns.
I, I think as I, as I recall and look at it, you know, we, it was driven by the fields, but applies equally well out here to any other location. You know, you have these large lots and, and this really says, you know, the very low-density is only one half acre to R115. Where I live, there's one acre lots, two acre lots. So really very low-density, R115's at the far extreme of that. And then if you put an R18 in the low-density, that's, to me, that's a very small lot compared to the density of what's around there. So the R18 really more fits into a medium density, the R18, R16 versus the R112, R110. We're trying, we, we created those zones of very low-density, low-density to keep open space and R18 doesn't get the open space. You're back into just every cookie cutter house looks alike. That's why it's not compatible in those zones and that's why every neighbor's upset about it when we come into this process. And that's why we need to move it where it really fits in, that's more medium-density and where we zone medium-density, if they want R18, they can have R18. On low-density, R112 and R110, shouldn't be any hiccups about the name, it's clearly defined and that fits in more with the low-density. So I, I think that the adjustment is well called for and it's almost too late because we've already done a number of projects and given them the R18 because it fit within the zoning designation that was inappropriate.
Yeah, most of those, I think we took into, to a lot of consideration that those lots really weren't R18 lot. I mean, they may have had one or two 8,000 square foot lots or a few, very few have been in it, most of those lots were 10,000 square foot. And I think that's why at least I voted.